Okay, um, looks like the game. Yes, Nicole, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Did you say that Steve Volin is not here tonight?
No, he won't be here this evening.
Okay.
So I am your very honored chair this evening.
Sounds good.
All right, I think, stop it, stop it. Um, I think everyone's here, so it's time to get started. Today is Wednesday, October fourteenth, uh, twenty twenty, and this is a special session of the Bloomington Common Council. Madam Clerk, shall we start with roll call?
Yes, uh, Councilmember Rallo.
I'm here.
Scambaluri?
Here.
Rosenbarger?
Here.
Sims?
Here.
Piedmont Smith?
Here.
Flaherty?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
And Sandberg?
Here.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Um, and before we really get into anything, um, I'll say this a couple of times throughout the night, I'm sure. And this is directed mainly for public comment for our community members. Um, when it comes time for that, please use the raise hand function in chat or send us a note, I'm sorry, in Zoom, the hand raised hand function in Zoom, or send us a note in chat, and we'll try to accommodate everyone this evening. So we're down to agenda summation. Um, after, well, we're gonna have appointments to boards and commissions, and then we have legislation for second readings. They are as follows, pardon me, ordinance twenty dash twenty-five to amend ordinance nineteen dash twenty, which fix the salaries of officers of the police and fire departments for the city of Bloomington, Indiana for the year twenty twenty, replacing maximum salaries with salary ranges for certain public safety personnel. The committee recommendation for that ordinance was due pass nine zero zero. Next one's ordinance twenty dash twenty-two, an ordinance fixing the salaries of officers in the police and fire departments for the city of Bloomington, Indiana for the year twenty twenty, committee recommendation due pass nine zero zero. Third item, ordinance twenty dash twenty-three, an ordinance fixing the salaries of appointed officers, non-union and ASME, A F S C M E, ASME employees for all the departments of the city of Bloomington, Monroe County, Indiana for the year twenty twenty. The committee recommendation for that ordinance was three six zero. Next item, ordinance twenty dash twenty-four to fix the salaries of all elected city officials for the city of Bloomington for the year twenty twenty. Committee recommendation for that ordinance was nine zero zero, due pass. Next ordinance, number five, appropriation ordinance twenty dash oh five, an ordinance adopting a budget for the operations, maintenance, debt service, and capital improvements for the water and wastewater utility departments of the city of Bloomington, Indiana for the year twenty twenty-one. Uh, committee recommendation was due pass nine zero zero. Next item, number six, appropriation ordinance twenty dash oh six, appropriation and tax rates for Bloomington Transportation Corporation for twenty twenty-one. The committee recommendation was due pass nine zero zero. And lastly, number seven, appropriation ordinance twenty dash oh four, an ordinance for appointment and tax rates establishing twenty twenty-one civil city budget for the city of Bloomington. The committee recommendation, uh, due pass, the count was four, three, and two. Okay, um, do we have any appointments to boards or commissions this evening? Yes, Councilmember Flaherty?
Uh, yes, the, um, on behalf of the Climate Action and Resilience Committee, uh, I would like to recommend, um, Bailey uh, Anderson to the, uh, council appointment for environmental commission.
Back it.
All right, thank you. Um, could you repeat her name again? I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's Bailey Anderson.
Okay, thank you. Um, been properly moved in second. Um, Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Yes, before we go any further, uh, Mr. Flaherty, did you have a particular seat that you were appointing?
It's the only vacancy on the, uh, council vacancy. I believe it's seat C two.
Okay. So the motion is on appointing Bailey Anderson to seat C two?
Yes.
All right, Councilmember Rallo?
Yes.
Scambaluri?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yeah.
Sims?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, before we get into deliberations on, um, our legislative business this evening, we have three items that I'd like to take care of. The first two are conflict of interest disclosures, um, that is appropriate during this time of the year. And I'll go first if that's okay with you, Councilmember Flaherty.
Council, Council President Sims?
Yes, I'm sorry, yes.
I maybe, uh, I may have misheard. Um, uh, our corporation counsel is, uh, sending me a note that I, when you were reading the legislation, the titles, um, I, for some of them, you may have mentioned the year twenty twenty. I know the first item on the agenda is twenty twenty, but I just wanted to clarify that all of the, uh, uh, other items after that first item, uh, relate to the twenty twenty-one budget. So just to clarify, I, I don't know if, uh, I, I misheard, but I think you may have said the, the budget for twenty twenty for some of those items. So just to clarify for the public.
Actually, I did, because that's what I have on the sheet. So I, is it okay with you correcting them that then we can move forward?
Uh, just a note for the public, ordinance twenty twenty-five, I believe, relates to the, uh, salary, the public safety salary ordinance for the year twenty twenty.
Yes.
Six items relate to the twenty twenty-one budget and, and related salary ordinances.
Okay, to correct that order, is it simply okay for me to say that?
Uh, I think that's fine. I will, I'll share the, uh, the agenda for this evening in the chat, uh, for any folks at, uh, attending the meeting that want to access that.
Um, point of information?
Yes.
The error was actually in the agenda, so.
Oh.
Yeah, that's kind of, yeah.
Sharing it will not help.
I was just reading what I've got, yes.
I'm glad you pointed that out then. That's why you read it.
Yes.
We'll get that corrected, but, uh, we'll post a corrected agenda.
Okay, thank you very, very much. Okay, um, and I'll start. As some of you may know, my wife serves as a department head for the Housing and Neighborhood Development, uh, Department. Tonight, the council will consider legislation relating to the city budget for twenty twenty-one. By voting on this budget, I would be voting in part on the funds for a departmental budget overseen by my spouse, including my spouse's salary. There is a provision in local code which applies when a council member is required to take action on a matter where he or she has a direct financial interest, uh, which is more than minimal or different from that shared by the general public. In that event, the council member must explain the potential conflict and either, one, ask that he or she be excused from voting, deliberating, or taking action on the matter, or, number two, state why he or she is able to participate fairly, objectively, and in the public interest despite the potential conflict. In this case, I wish to declare the potential conflict and state that, one, the salary for my spouse is part of a larger departmental, uh, departmental budget and aligns with city policies and practices that apply to non-union city employees, as was explained in the course of the August departmental budget hearings and the September thirtieth presentation by the Human Resources Department. Number two, because of the size and significance of the overall budget, I believe I have a duty to participate in order to effectively represent the constituents of the city. And lastly, when doing so, I intend to carry out those duties fairly, objectively, and in the public interest, and believe I am able to do so. Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Flaherty?
Thanks, have a similar statement to make. Um, as some of you know, my wife serves as the Planning Services Manager within the Planning and Transportation Department. And tonight, the council will consider legislation relating to the city budget for twenty twenty-one. By voting on this budget, I would be voting in part on funds for a departmental budget that would include the salary for my spice, spouse. There is a provision in local code which applies when a council member is required to take action on a matter where he has a direct financial interest, which is more than minimal or different from that shared by the general public. In that event, the council member must explain the potential conflict and either ask that he be excused from voting, deliberating, or taking action on the matter, or state why he is able to participate fairly, objectively, and in the public interest despite the potential conflict. In this case, I wish to declare that potential conflict and state that, first, the salary for my spouse is part of a larger departmental budget and aligns with the city policies and practices that apply to non-union city employees, as was explained in the course of the August departmental budget hearings and the September thirtieth presentation by the Human Resources Department. Second, because of the size and significance of the overall budget, I believe I have a duty to participate in order to effectively represent the constituents of the city. And third, when doing so, I intend to carry out those duties fairly, objectively, and in the public interest, and believe I am able to do so. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Um, did I see someone with their hand up? No, I did not. Okay, next, the, um, mayor has asked to address the council and the public briefly before we get into deliberations. So Mayor Hamilton, you're on.
Thank you very much. Truly good to be with you all. I appreciate it tonight, as you know, are the twenty twenty-one budget and salary ordinance votes. Um, I just want to give brief context that, uh, six months ago in April, so the public knows as well as you do, the, in the budget advance, uh, we heard detailed priorities and suggestions and comments from each of the nine council members that helped guide this budget development. Three months ago in July, uh, we shared recover forward ideas, proposals, and got reactions, feedback, questions about that, and of course, council approved phase one of that in July and August. Two months ago in August, uh, the administration presented our detailed budget proposals, uh, for twenty twenty-one over four nights, um, and with many meetings and discussions since then with the council and the public. And then two weeks ago, uh, the final formal presentations of the budget ordinances were given. Uh, I want to thank again the team of administration officials who helped with this, for, everybody helps, but particularly Deputy Mayor Matt Brennison, um, uh, Human Resource Director Caroline Shaw, and of course, Controller Jeff Underwood and the full cabinet for their great work. Um, and, and tonight, after this extensive and detailed six-month process, you gather for a final vote. Um, just a brief summary of, about, uh, tonight, uh, all of this input led to an unprecedented budget for unprecedented times, uh, dealing with four enormous challenges that both the council and the administration want to address for our, our community. The economic collapse where amid, amid, uh, the climate emergency facing us, the racial and economic injustice, a- and of course, the health pandemic. This overall budget deals with all of these issues together and intentionally and consistent with goals that the council has articulated and building on our momentum. The budget keeps basic services going and supports and values the eight hundred and fifty people who deliver services, uh, for all the city. It also tightens our belt in the face of the fiscal challenges and, and is transparent in all that we do. These times have called for special investments to recover forward. We, this budget invests in jobs and economic recovery for the people suffering in our community. It invests in climate responses, including new energy efficiency investments, uh, local agriculture supports, and non-automobile infrastructure. Uh, it invests in greater economic and racial opportunity and justice, the social safety net expansion, and more affordable housing, and continued innovation and evolution in our public safety departments. This budget also reflects the momentum of investing in our basic infrastructure. You may recall, uh, that in the first three years of my administration, we doubled the pace of basic infrastructure investments, from Public Works, Parks, Bloomington Transit, City Bloomington Utilities, Public Safety, doubling from twenty sixteen to twenty eighteen, the previous three years, from twenty million to forty million dollars of investment. That doubling has helped us build new or repair twenty-nine miles of sidewalks, trails, and side paths, with more to come. It has also meant our Parks Department, beyond, uh, opening the thirty-four million dollar largest new switchyard park, it also is investing nearly twenty million dollars more in general obligation and bicentennial bond proceeds, or even more new trail and path miles. We've invested thirteen million dollars for solar, expanding production by five megawatts, and four million dollars in the City of Bloomington Utilities' new green infrastructure program. Increased public tree population by fifty percent, and nearly a thousand affordable housing unit support. Lots of good momentum, but hard times confront us right now. The need for counter cyclical government is, is critical to help us recover forward and tighten our belts, managing finances carefully. The extensive feedback and support from city council through the years and through the last six months of budget engagement together have helped us focus on maintaining forward momentum, even during challenging times. And, and that has resulted in these twenty twenty-one budget and salary ordinances. Now, even after the extensive engagement and discussion on many, many items, there are some issues of disagreement that remain, primarily about two components in the one hundred and sixty-six million dollar budget for twenty twenty-one. One concerns the new proposed transportation demand management position, and a second is the police budget and some of the planned reforms. I'll just touch very briefly on both. On TDM, transportation demand management, uh, I believe we share goals for this position and the program to reduce single person and overall automobile usage, particularly downtown, and to collaborate outside government with, i- in, in implementing effective strategies. There is some dis- differences of views about where to house the new position inside City Hall. And I've said reasonable people may differ on the, the optimal placement. I hope when we can agree that the focus should be on the results of this position, and this administration is absolutely committed to being held accountable for results and for transparent reporting and continued collaboration. I believe we share overall support for the TDM position and the program, which depends upon a positive vote for the budget to be able to hire a person and implement the program at all. As to police, I and the community deeply appreciate the people of the Bloomington Police Department who serve us every day, our sworn officers, and all employees amid extraordinary times of attention and energy about policing in America and sensitivity to the history of policing in America. Our community and our department share a strong commitment to continued improvements, building on the history of downtown resource officers, body cameras, uh, social workers, neighborhood resource specialists, this new stride center, extensive training, the Open Data Initiative, Twenty First Century Policing Review, et cetera, and more. Members of this council, like members of the public, have varying views on the best paths forward. Uh, as a reminder, for the basic plan for twenty twenty-one in the budget, uh, we have proposed fully funding a hundred sworn officer positions for the year twenty twenty-one and adding new five positions for social workers, neighborhood resource specialists, and one public data analyst. A- as I've previously mentioned, I also will be supporting the creation of a community-based task force to consider the future of policing in the community, to consider wider and deeper questions, including, for example, the best alignment of resources and personnel in the public safety world over the coming months. We will continue to work closely with council and the community in standing up this process very shortly. Uh, also, working with the Bloomington Police Department and members of the council, we are identifying some steps to encourage and support more officers being able to live in the city, to be closer to our community through a new housing allowance program for current or new officers who choose to live in the city. And we will be encouraging retention of current officers and recruitment of high-quality new officers through a take-home car program for all officers living in the city, a- and a pilot take-home car program for some officers living in the county outside city limits who have special responsibilities and for whom immediate access to patrol cars will be helpful to our community. Both the housing allowance and that take-home car program will be accomplished within the twenty twenty-one budget as presented to you. And I'll close where I began. I appreciate the indulgence. I want to thank the council and the public for six months of extensive engagement to put together this most important annual document of the budget. These are extraordinary times. They demand extraordinary focus to help us all recover from and confront major challenges to our community. Every one of us, no doubt, can point to something in this budget that we might like changed or different. Uh, but I believe it very well embodies our community's values in the face of these times, and it is a prudent and effective investment for a better future for our community. I really appreciate your attention and your collaboration, and I strongly encourage your support of this twenty twenty-one budget. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor Hamilton. Um, I'll ask the parliamentarian, is this, is this appropriate time for questions, or do we just move on? Just a statement?
Um, I would think that we would do questions, uh, with each piece of legislation.
No, 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 I mean for the mayor's, um, statement just now.
Right.
No, he, that's, no, I'm sorry. I was, I, I didn't know if we'd open that up for questions to council members to the mayor's statement that he just gave. So, okay.
I think it's up to you. I, I would say no, but.
Well, uh, I listened to my parliamentarian, so thank you, Ha- Mayor Hamilton. Um, I think we'll move on to, um, the first item on our legislative for second reading.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I move that ordinance twenty twenty-five be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second?
Okay, it's been moved to second. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll? Um, or please read.
I think I call the roll first.
Oh, the roll first, yes, and then read, thank you.
Yes.
We've got a lot of them to do tonight.
Yes. And I still wasn't ready, so my apologies, everyone. Okay, Councilmember Scambaluri?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yeah.
Sims?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo? Did we lose Councilmember Rallo?
Yes, we have a couple. He's trying to get in now.
Okay, um, I think we can go on from here, if you want to, unless you saw.
Trying to see if he's, trying to see if he's getting on. Okay, I think we can handle that later. Um, Madam Clerk, would you please read?
Yes. Ordinance twenty twenty-five to amend not ordinance nineteen twenty, which fixes salaries of officers of the police and fire departments for the city of Bloomington, Indiana for the year twenty twenty, regarding replacing maximum salaries with salary ranges for certain public safety personnel. The synopsis is as follows. This ordinance amends ordinance nineteen twenty, which fixes salaries of officers for the police and fire departments for the year twenty twenty. The amendment assigns pay grades and replaces maximum salaries with minimum and maximum salaries. Your due pass recommendation for this ordinance was nine zero zero.
Mr. Chair, I move that ordinance twenty twenty-five be adopted.
Second?
It's been moved in second. Um, Clerk, will you please call the roll? Do we not call the roll again? Okay, thank you. Um, who do we have presenting tonight? Thank you. I'll see Ms. Shaw down here. Hi, Ms. Shaw.
Hi, everyone. Good evening, council and, um, everyone. My name is Caroline Shaw. I'm the HR Director. Thank you for having me. I, uh, presented this in detail a couple of weeks ago, as you know. Um, and I, for sake of time, I'm, I'm happy to answer any specific questions you might have, but I won't go into it in more detail unless you'd like me to.
Hey, thank you. Um, we'll go to council members for any questions. Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yeah, I don't have a question, but just for the benefit of the public, Ms. Shaw, could you just briefly summarize what this ordinance would accomplish?
Absolutely. Uh, this ordinance replaces fat, flat salaries, rather, for, um, our, many of our police positions and fire positions that are not covered under the contract with salary ranges, which allows us some more flexibility in assigning salaries, uh, in future years.
Great, and was there an amendment?
There is. Thank you for bringing that up, and I had several people volunteer to sponsor that today, and I really appreciate that. I'm not sure who got the, the honor.
Are you speaking of Amendment One to, I have that as listed with ordinance twenty twenty-two, not twenty twenty-five?
So do I.
So, okay.
It's, there's actually an amendment for both. I, I think, uh, packet addendum that went out. There should have been three amendments.
Yes, okay. Oh, got it, sorry. Okay, um, yes, um, Vice President Sims, I'd like to read in, shall I read this into the record?
You just need to move the amendment.
Yes.
Okay, um, I would like to move that section two of ordinance twenty dash twenty-five shall be amended by increasing the job grade of supervisory sergeant to grade eight, and by increasing the salary range of supervisory sergeant to a minimum salary of forty-three thousand ninety-eight dollars and a maximum salary of sixty-eight thousand nine hundred and fifty-nine dollars.
Second?
Thank you.
And for those of you who want to refer, for those of you who want to refer to a packet in the legislative packet from September thirtieth, this is on page ninety-one.
Okay, Ms. Parliamentarian, um, should the synopsis be read as well? Or Councilmember Scambler?
Um, that's not necessary, since she read the, the whole thing, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so did you move to have this adopted? Yes.
I did, and season, Councilmember Sandberg seconded.
Okay, um, thank you.
Ms. Shaw may have some additional comments on this.
I'm happy to make additional comments. They'll be brief. Um, we made a mistake in HR. We assigned the supervisory sergeant to the wrong pay grade, and we didn't catch it until after we presented to you on September thirtieth. And I'm very thankful for your support in helping us get this fixed, and also, Mr. Lucas, for, for helping us expedite this. You make mistakes occasionally. Thank you all. Any questions for me about that?
I don't see any. Um, Clerk, can we call the roll on this motion? Do we need?
Um, before we call roll on the motion to adopt Amendment One, do you guys have to go to the public or anything on that?
Yes, we should.
No, I, I thought this was a roll call to, um, accept her, not her, motion, but, so we don't do that.
That's not necessary.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so we'll go to council members for questions or comments. Okay, seeing none, we'll go to the public. If anyone has any comments on Amendment One for ordinance twenty dash twenty-five? Is that, is that correct? No?
No, that is correct.
No, I'm checking with the clerks if we go to the public for comments on this. Okay, and that's what I, shit. Do we have any?
None that I can see.
Okay. Thank you. Going back to the council for any final comments or questions? Okay, seeing none. Um, Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes, um, for Amendment One, Councilmember Rosenbarger?
Yeah.
Sims?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Flaherty? Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo? Still not with us? Um, Scambaluri?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. Um, do we have another amendment? Cause none, that's the only amendment for.
For twenty twenty-five.
Twenty twenty-five, okay, thank you. Um, now the ordinance, do we need to vote on? Now, the ordinance, do we need to vote on it as it's been amended?
We need to go to the.
Do I need to sec? And do I need to, okay, thank you. We're now open for a public comment. Please indicate by using the raised hand functions if you have any comments on ordinance 20-25 as amended or send us a note in chat, and we'll allow you to speak that way. Okay, do we see anything, Madam Clerk? Okay, seeing none. Do we go back to council for final comment or call the roll? Councilmember Piedmont Smith.
I'm, I'm sorry, I just have a quick question for Ms. Shaw.
Yes.
So, since we're revising the 2020 salary ordinance, will there be any salary adjustments to actual personnel as a result of this ordinance?
There actually will, and that's, I put that one aside, that's covered in the memo I issued, but I'm happy to go over that again. We realized that fire management salaries were, let me just find that section really quickly. It came to our attention that compared to their peers and other depart, other city departments, the fire deputy chief, battalion chiefs were underpaid. And we have made corrections to their salaries pending approval of this legislation.
So will they then get back pay for all of 2020?
They will, and I can actually tell you if you'd like what their, what their salaries were and what they will be. Would you like that information?
I don't need that, I just.
They will get back pay.
And we have that in our budget, in the fire budget.
Yes, we do. Very good, thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any further questions or comments from council? Okay, seeing none. Madam Clerk, do we go to the role to adopt ordinance 20-25 as amended?
Yes, Councilmember Sims?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Scambalory?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, and that passes seven zero. I'm wondering if Councilmember Rallo is still trying to get in, so he still may join us. So, thank you very much. Council Parliamentarian?
Yes, I move that ordinance 2022 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Can you?
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
Sorry, I jumped ahead.
It's okay.
Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Now, Rallo, yet, Scambalory?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
And Sims?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Madam Clerk, will you please read?
Yes, ordinance 2022, an ordinance fixing the salaries of officers of the police and fire departments for the city of Bloomington, Indiana for the year 2021. And the synopsis is as follows. This ordinance sets the minimum and maximum salary rates for all sworn fire and police personnel for the year 2021 in accordance with council-approved collective bargaining agreements. Your due pass recommendation for ordinance 2022 is nine zero zero.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair, I move that ordinance 2022 be adopted.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. I do believe we have two amendments.
We do, and I'll be sharing those.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, the first is actually a housekeeping that actually runs parallel to the ordinance we just passed. Vice President, council members, I move that Section 2A of ordinance 2022 shall be amended by increasing the job grade of supervisory sergeant to grade eight and by increasing the salary range of supervisory sergeant to a minimum salary of $43,960 and a maximum salary of $70,338.
Second.
Okay, thank you very much. And we've heard that one. And before we go to the next one, do we have? Looks like Councilmember Rallo is back. Do we have, I'm sorry, do we have any questions or comments from the council? Ordinance one, I'm sorry, Amendment One on ordinance 20-22. Okay, see, Councilmember Piedmont Smith.
So this is just making the same correction that we made for 2020, and now we're applying it to 2021, is that right?
Yes, correct. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions? Okay. I believe we need to go to the public for comment on this amendment. Number one for ordinance 20-22, please use the raised hand function in Zoom or send a message on chat if any of the members of the public has a comment. Do we have any, Madam Clerk, that you see? No, okay, thank you. And go back to the council on any final comments? Okay, seeing none. Madam Clerk, can we call the roll on Amendment One for ordinance 20-22?
Yes. Councilmember? Flaherty?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo? Oh.
Yes.
Scambalory?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
And Sims?
Yes.
Sorry, one more, and Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Thank you, and I believe that passes eight zero. Okay. And we have Amendment Two.
Do, Vice President Sims, I would like to move that ordinance 2022 shall be amended by inserting a new Section Three and renumbering subsequent sections accordingly. The new Section Three shall read, "Section Three, the maximum number of sworn officers within the police department for the year 2021 shall be set at 105." And I bring this amendment on behalf of, sponsored by myself and Councilmember Sandberg.
And second.
Okay, it's been moved to second. Do we have any comments or questions from council members? Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
I guess I don't understand the purpose of this amendment.
Sure, would it be helpful if I provided some additional background?
Yes, please.
I didn't want to do so without it. Mr. Lucas, I'm going to screen share, but if that attempt fails, please let me know. Okay. By way of background, for those of you, many of us, and all of us on council, and many in the public have followed this conversation for the last several months, and particularly where the policing budget is concerned, the questions have, have circled around two issues. One has been the balance of resources. How much is devoted to sworn officers, how much is devoted to non-sworn officers? And the other is, is focused on staffing levels. How many officers do we have? And as part of his, his proposal to us, the mayor proposed dropping the number from 105 to 100 and fully funding that 100. So, one of the bits of information, I think, that the, all of us want to make this decision based on good information. One of the statistics that was shared during the September 30th public hearing had to do with the amount of resources that have been devoted to increasing staffing in the police department since 2015. So, I want to express my appreciation. Can everyone see that slide?
Yes.
Can you make it larger, please?
I can try. Better? Whoa, no, too big. Apparently, no, no, I can't make this bigger, so.
Yeah, it's, it works part of the time.
Better?
If you went to presentation mode, it would probably be full screen, but it's also fine.
Yes.
By way of background, one of the bits of information presented said that we had seen a 43% increase in staffing within the police department. And I had some questions about that particular number. I think that number in and of itself is very striking. And to most ordinary members of the public, it sounds as if we have had a 43% increase in the number of police officers on the street since 2015. And I wanted to make sure we were comparing apples to apples, and we were actually looking at that information accurately and that we were differentiating between civilian, non-sworn officers, dispatch, and sworn officers. So what you see here, staffing levels for 2015, this data comes from the city of Bloomington Office of the Mayor. I want to express my thanks to the mayor and to Deputy Mayor Mick Brennison for sharing this information. This is a column I added of just population estimates for Bloomington based on opendatanetwork.com. And the exact population varies depending on who you ask. But most of them, this is pretty representative of how the population has grown over time. Between 2015 and 2021, 6.8% increase, right? Here we have civilian, non-sworn officers, these are administrative positions, administrative support positions. Dispatch, a comment I want to offer here, 2017, we see this big jump. That was the year that the budget lines for 10 and a half dispatch staff came over from the county to the city. Those positions already existed, so it wasn't a net increase, we weren't hiring entirely new people. It just folded into our budget line. And then sworn officers, we see the totals here. Okay, here are the total staff for that. And. So let's look at, it was helpful to me to actually look at these numbers. So, rather than a 43% overall increase, what we do see in civilian officers, we see a 33, just over a 30% increase in that period of time. Dispatch, we see about an 83%, little over 83% increase in staff and a 0% increase in sworn officers. This is the data that I was looking for. And I think the contrast that concerns me most, these, these numbers don't concern me, civilian and dispatch officers. I think those are wonderful additions. I, all along, I've supported the addition of social workers to this. This is the number, number comparison that concerns me, is that while our population has grown, we have not made corresponding investments in sworn officers. 2021 is what's been proposed. We have heard a lot about budget taking a hit in the years to come, and I think we fully expect that. My concern is that if we dial this back to 100, those positions for sworn officers are not going to return. So what does this amendment do? What it does not do, what it does not do is change the dollar amounts that we have available. We are funding 100, 100 sworn officer positions, just as the mayor said. It doesn't change the obligation of Chief, Chief Deepkoff to work within that budget. He still has to take that budget and apply it to his staffing needs. What it does do is provide administration and council with some flexibility as we think about staffing next year. I would agree with the mayor that we have some deeper questions to dive into. We have to acknowledge that our city is growing. At the same time, we have to acknowledge that policing is changing. This simply gives us the flexibility to do that. It puts the cap, it doesn't, it keeps the cap at 105 instead of 100. In all likelihood, we will not hire those five, those five, and we've been in conversation with that. But I think these numbers were very telling to me and painted a more accurate picture of where we are. So, Councilmember Sandberg, I'll invite you to add comments as well.
Yes, and if you could stop screen sharing, I think it's causing a little bit of distortion in the sound, unless anybody really wants to see these figures while we're talking. But Councilmember Scambalory and I have had grave concerns about the staffing levels. What we want to reassure of the public is this absolutely has no fiscal impact with this year's budget. It does, however, allow the flexibility that I think we all need to be cognizant of, that right now, and for those of us that have taken the time to get acquainted with the BPD staff, to go on some ride-alongs, to attend some of their roll calls, it is absolutely clear that they are dealing with staffing shortages. That is a fact on the ground that we are seeing, we can observe it with our eyes when we take the time to go in and meet with them and talk to them about what their needs are. I absolutely applaud the addition of the social work positions, the neighborhood resource, and the data analyst. This is a both-and situation, and this does not commit us in any kind of a fiscal sense. What it does do is give us the flexibility in the future to take a look at those staffing levels and really think about doing something significant to alleviate some of the stress and, and some of the morale issues that we are clearly seeing in the BPD right now. So I wholeheartedly support this. I urge my fellow council members to do the same. Once again, no impact to the budget this year. It just gives us some growing room that we are going to absolutely need to, to take very seriously in the coming year and coming years, actually. As the community grows and the need for patrols, I've had a number of concerns about issues related to the new Switchyard Park coming week. I did a ride-along last night in which we, I actually saw with my own eyes what's going on after 11 o'clock. And we, we, our BPD need relief, they need some help. And so they need a council that's going to take, take that fairly seriously. So, again, thank you very much for hearing us out, and we hope to get some, some good support.
I thank you very, very much. We're going to the council for questions or comments on ordinance 20-22 as amended. Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
I guess I'm still confused because the current ordinance without the amendment does not have a limit on the number of police officers. And now we're adding a limit of 105. Am I missing something? I don't understand how this would give us more wiggle room than not having any limit in ordinance.
Sue, do you want to take that?
Yeah, I think the simplest way to, to say this, we've all heard about the budget difficulties that are on the horizon. What we have essentially done is taken five sworn officer positions, repurposed them to become, to, to fund social work positions this year. In order to hire those five sworn officers in a future year, as it currently stands, we would have to let, let those social workers go. We can't produce extra money. What we want to do is keep that number at 105, so we have the flexibility in future years if funding is available to grow that. We don't want to lose those five positions and have them say, well, I'm sorry, those were just changed. We can't have any more sworn officers because those, those salary lines are separate. We've already hired social workers for it. This gives us the flexibility to do that if we choose to appropriate funds in the future. I'm not sure if that helps or not.
And also, and also, to be clear, we did vet this with our, our counsel attorney, who in, I believe, has vetted it with Mr. Rucker and perhaps Philippa Guthrie. I don't know if they want to add any more, that we are within our rights, you know, with this ordinance to do this. It sets a maximum, and it, it is, it is more just, again, some insurance for the future more than anything. It doesn't really affect this year's budget, per se. Mr. Lucas, do you have anything else to add with respect to our? Mr. Lucas, do you have anything else to add with respect to our ability to do this?
I, I think this amendment is within the council's authority, although council member Piedmont Smith, I think, is correct that the practical impact of this, this year is, is really nothing. And actually, this does place an upper limit on the number of officers where there wasn't one before, although the upper limit placed by this amendment is higher than the amount budgeted for those positions. So in effect, it, it, it won't have a, an impact one way or the other, I think.
I think too, that one of the, the things we wish to do and the part of our thinking in, in proposing this amendment was to send a message of support to our officers. The notion that we are experiencing recruitment and retention issues is not new. It shouldn't be news to anybody on council. And we want to, we want our sworn officers to know that we have heard their concerns. We understand that the, the staffing pressures they are under are extreme and presenting challenges, and we want to let them know that we understand staffing should not be cut. Departments don't get stronger and better when resources are taken away, and we want to acknowledge that.
Councilmember Flaherty.
Yeah, I heard the word flexibility a number of times, that this somehow increases flexibility, but it seems to do the exact opposite for the reasons we just heard. It sets an upper limit where there isn't one now, and even if ordinance 2025 as unamended doesn't limit any future flexibility in any respect with regard to budgets or salary ordinances. So I'm, I'm just, it seems to me like it reduces flexibility and also doesn't have any impact. So I'm, I'm curious to hear your thoughts about that.
Yeah, I, I can tackle that. We are, this, this only impacts budget 2021. This does not go beyond in years. And we are well aware, given our recruitment issues, given the fact that we're making officers to, to, we're making offers to, to new officers, but we're not, we're not getting anywhere near even 100. So this is largely symbolic. Again, as council member Scamblory said, it's to send the message that if we have the ability to do so in future years, we want to have that flexibility and that ability to get up to the optimum number of 105. Now, in the coming years, we may have to take a look at our resources. We may not be able to do, you know, that, and of course, this is year by year that, that we're talking about here. We're not setting a cap indefinitely. This will only apply to 2021's budget, this amendment.
And, and I think it's worth pointing out too, that again, we, we have seen a zero increase, a 0% increase in sworn officers in the city in the last five years. There is not some huge increase in sworn officers on the streets. In fact, there is none. And that's while our population is growing, and that concerns me. So preserving a higher number, I think, becomes very, very important. Beyond that, I think this acknowledges the NOVAC report, that it's interesting, as I listen to other budget presentations this year, many have mentioned NOVAC reports in their own departments. This actually acknowledges recommendations from the NOVAC report as well, that, that increases in staffing are merited. So it, again, it preserves this number. It allows our sworn officers to know that we support them and that we understand the staffing pressures that they are under. And it's, it's a, it's a clear statement to that effect as opposed to simply doing nothing and, and leaving the number at 100. So.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions or comments from any further, or any other council members? All right, I, I got you. I want to give someone else a first by the apple before we get there. I'll be with it. Councilmember Smith.
I just like to say that I appreciate the, the gesture that it sends to our BPD. And so I, I just want to thank council member Scamblory and Sandberg for doing this. I, I think it's a, it's a good idea, and it's, it's a something that we need to show a little support out there. I went along and went down to listen to the officers one day, and they're really stressed. And maybe would one of you describe what you mean by staffing pressures? For instance, if you went on a, on a ride-along?
Councilmember Sandberg, can you share your experience on ride-along last year?
Yes, I, I absolutely can. I've been to several roll calls in which, you know, at the start of each shift, you take a look at the chart on the wall to see how many officers are on each of the shifts. And many times, those positions are filled by people working double shifts. They have a certain amount of vacation time that they need to schedule in advance. And of course, with maybe people being out for like desk duty because of injury, or they're on, they have to do National Guard duty, we're going to sometimes experience, experience shortages. Last night, we were short by one, and at 10 o'clock, it went down to two more that they were short. Now, it was a quiet night. There wasn't a whole lot going on, and so fortunately, everybody was able to cover their patrols and with very little incident. But there might be some evenings when you have heavily trafficked calls and, and need for first responders, and they're, they're short-staffed. There, we, we could be into some difficulties, not to, not the least to mention, they're tired when they're working double shifts in order to cover for, for their fellow officers who, for reasons, you know, cannot be on duty. And so those shortages are going to take its toll. And as council member Scamblory has already said, you're not going to make a department stronger, better, better trained, well-rested if they don't have the opportunity to take the much-needed time off from very stressful jobs. And so I've seen those charts. There are some nights that it's, it could be very iffy as to the amount of officers that we have on patrol on any given evening, any given afternoon, any given morning. There are three different shifts. And the dedication that I've observed too in these officers, that in spite of the fact that they're tired and they're under some stress for a lot of reasons that we all know, that they still come to work, and they're dedicated, and they're well-trained, and they're well-disciplined, and they want to do the best job possible. So, you know, I have great respect for them as I get more acquainted with them and their issues. And they'll, they'll be very frank in telling us, we're, you know, we're going to serve. We're going to serve to the best of our ability, but we are dealing with staffing levels that are, should concern us.
Thank, thank you very much.
Hey, thank you. Councilmember Flaherty.
Sure, thanks. I believe council member Sandberg said that 105 was the optimal number. And of course, you know, talking about 100 is what we had in 2015, and that's still what we have now in this year's budget. That's a 0% increase. I mean, that sort of presupposes that 100 officers per 82,813 people is the optimal amount, or is the right amount, or that 105 for the current population is optimal. So I'm curious how the sponsors determined the optimal, optimal number of officers.
And I, I, I will not say that's optimum. If you're looking at the NOVAC report, 105 is not nearly enough, but it is, I think, you know, by five, it is aspirational. And if we could possibly get up to that level, given that we've been there before in, in prior budget years, that will hold the line. Is it optimal? No, but I think it does send a signal that that's what we hope to achieve if and when it's at all possible for our recruiting ability, for our, our getting, you know, well-trained people into the force, not losing anymore. That's a huge concern because we are training our officers to be first class. The training, people want well-trained Bloomington police officers, and they're coming after them. And offers are being made, and we are losing good officers to other jurisdictions because of the fact that there are just these stresses and strains that we're not paying attention to. And so I want to just make sure that we're protecting the good thing that we have in Bloomington with people who are dedicated, professional, and who are doing a good job for us. Does that make sense? No, there's no such thing as 105 being, oh, that's the number we, we want to get and stay at because we could possibly need more. But we've got to deal with the realities of our budget, what we're able to do from a fiscal standpoint.
Councilmember Scamblory.
Thank you. What she just said, okay. And one important point too, that I, that I think is easy to overlook, most of us on council, I think, maybe all of us on council, have actively supported the notion of increasing the number of social workers who can be resources in our community. We may differ on where the reporting lines, but most of us have been very supportive of that notion. What this amendment essentially says is that it's not necessarily okay to cannibalize sworn officer positions to pay for social workers. It underscores that the sworn officer positions are valuable. Is 105 optimal? No, it's low, according to the NOVAC report. But what this amendment does is make the statement that cannibalizing sworn officer positions for social work positions is not the best approach.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions or comments from council members? Okay, I'll, councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Well, I assume we'll, we'll have a chance for comment after the public.
Yes. Yes, yes. Okay. Seeing none, now we'll go to the public for comments on ordinance 20-22 as amended.
Point of interest.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Yes, go ahead.
It would be comments on amendment two.
I'm sorry, amendment two. You're absolutely right. I'm ahead of myself. And we'll go to the public. I do believe we have some folks that have raised hands in the Zoom function, and we may have one more that's indicated on the chat. Madam Clark?
Okay, we'll go ahead and start with Nathan, if you could unmute yourself now.
Yes, thank you. Can you handle it?
Yes. No.
Sorry, can you hear me?
Yes, yes.
Okay, sorry about that. My, I just want to speak briefly about the idea of flexibility and remind the council of the aphorism, when all you have is a hammer, everything looks like a nail.
I'm sorry, Nathan, could you give us your full name, please, for the record? Sorry.
Thank you. Okay, I think he's having some internet or Wi-Fi issues. Can we move forward? Kirk Bowden, and we'll come back to him if he gets back on screen. You're muted. That's okay.
Never get used to that. Next up, we have Mary Morgan. Mary Morgan, if you'd like to go ahead.
Thank you. This is Mary Morgan with the Greater Bloomington Chamber of Commerce. We really appreciate this amendment that's being brought forward by council members Scamblory and Sandberg, especially appreciate the references to the NOVAC report and to the headcount chart, which seems to indicate a pretty clear lack of upward trajectory for our sworn officers. The business community is very concerned about the city's ability to retain and recruit sworn officers. And I do think this is a step, given the constraints that the council is under regarding the budget, it does provide some signal of the city's support to the, to BPD and to the public. So appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Who do we have next?
Next up, we have Paul Post. Mr. Post, if you'd like to unmute?
Good evening. My name is Paul Post. I am the president of the internal order police here in Bloomington, representing the bargaining unit at BPD. And we would also like to express our thanks to council members Scamblory and Sandberg for bringing this amendment forward tonight and giving that strong support to the, the officers. They have recognized the issues going on, and we, we wanted to say thank you. So I think the staffing issue is not going to be solved quickly, but recognizing the NOVAC study and looking at those numbers going forward over the next few years is going to be very important. So again, thank you for bringing it up. I will relay it to my officers, and we appreciate hearing it.
Thank you, Mr. Post. Who's next?
Next up, we have Alex Goodla. Alex, if you'd like to, woo, unmute yourself.
Hello. So I would like to speak in opposition of this amendment, and I guess for, for a few reasons. I guess the first is that the, the, the NOVAC report is, I, I, like, I, I guess, before I get to the NOVAC report, I would just say that there, there needs to be discussions from those who, you know, on the other side of the aisle in terms of where we should go in the future of the police department. And there needs to be more concrete proof that it's, it's needed, you know? The, the NOVAC report is known to be pro-police and just want more police. And, and, you know, I know in Bloomington, it's, it's, you know, it's, every situation is unique, but like, that's kind of why we shouldn't listen to the NOVAC report, right? Because we, we know that it doesn't work, like, the, the NOVAC philosophy doesn't work in these, these big cities where, you know, we have a police brutality there. So that's, that, that, that's kind of bad. And second, I, I would like to, I don't think more officers is going to help relieve stress of the officers, and that's based on hearing, just, you know, recall not too long ago, we had the, the budget forums about the Bloomington police officers, and a lot of them were just really, really stressed because they feel like they're going to like, you know, lose their lives due to policing. And, and, and policing, just statistically speaking, isn't that dangerous? So like, I think what would actually help is training to not feel like you're always in danger of whatever you do when you're not in fact in danger. I think that's going to help instead of, instead of increasing the, the cap, which it's, what's that really going to do? And also, I have citation stats which tell us that the second quarter citation rates went, went like way down. So what, what are Bloomington police even really doing that's justifying an increase? There, there needs to be more focus on, on, you know, local data. We, we have citation rates, we have use of force rates. And, you know, I'm, I'm personally, I, I plan to look and do a lot more research into it myself. I do hope, and there's five more positions in the 100 that's currently there after the 95 they do have, that they encompassed and, you know, look at it themselves. I, I think that we need to look more, ultimately, in conclusion, we need to look more into the numbers. And thanks for listening, and I yield my time.
Thank you, Mr. Goodla. Who do we have next? Kirk Bowden?
Next up, we have Danielle Bird. If you would like to unmute yourself, you can go ahead.
Hello. Thank you for allowing me to speak. And I want to thank the council members who have all been so diligently on this. And I've talked to many of you and corresponded regarding a petition that I was involved in that 158 community members have signed that don't support the current proposal for increasing the embeddedness of social workers and neighborhood resource specialists and the data analysts. But I, I'm, I'm listening to all of you talk, and I'm, I'm concerned as well about the overwhelmed officers. And as a social worker who's had more than 20 years of experience and practice, I can tell you, there's never enough social workers. There's, we always need more. And we always, if we keep going at this, we're always going to need more police officers. We have racial and economic inequity in this country. We don't have the adequate healthcare and housing. And I think we need to really think about, instead of Band-Aids and, and addressing these crises, that we need to really start to step back a little bit and say, how can we use our resources in a way that can address those things so that we don't burn out our officers and our social workers? How can we make effective change in the systems that we have? And I know you're addressing the police budget right now, but that's exactly the kind of conversation that we can have about, you know, how do we move forward as a community and address public safety? How can we do that in a way that we're not constantly trying to deal with putting out fires? How can we be proactive? And our community has the expertise and the passion of so many community members who can work on this and do it. I, I understand that it's not going to happen for the 2021 budget, and I appreciate the mayor's interest in looking at how we can put together task force and, and many other council members. and, and many other council members, I think, have expressed this. So I just want to, I want to just thank you all and just say that I, you know, I think that we're scrambling around, we're never going to have enough police, we're never going to have enough social workers to deal with the root causes that are causing folks to be involved in policing and criminal justice. And I think if we can analyze, what are the police spending their time on? Which, I've seen some data, and it doesn't suggest that the majority of the time is spent on violent crime. There's a lot of things happening, and I understand they're trying to respond to all of these phone calls and, and 911 calls. But, you know, how can we better spend the time of the officers and not put all of the world's problems on our police? And, you know, I appreciate the work that social workers do, but honestly, I would love to see social workers out of a job. I would love for us to have enough for our community members that they don't have constant crises. So I think we can do this better. I think Bloomington is, has a lot of resources and a lot of caring people. And so I just hope to have more conversations, and I appreciate your work and openness to thinking about this for the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Byrd. And I'm not, I'd like to remind the public that this is comments on amendment number two of ordinance 20-22. Kirk Bowden, we have anyone else?
Yes, we do. Next up is Jim Haverstock, if you'd like to unmute.
My name is James Haverstock, and I would like to speak in support of this amendment and issue my thanks for even having it considered this evening. What no one has said, and I assume you're just all too polite and too nice to say, is that it is the mayor's intention to defund the police department by reducing the number of sworn officers from unauthorized 105 to 100. So when we talk about a question of flexibility, it is to say we will have that flexibility to stay at 105 because if left open-ended, he has announced his intention publicly and for some time now that he will reduce the numbers down to 100. This is going to protect the number of officers. And again, you're all such nice people, you don't want to say that. I'm trying to be nice, but that is his intention, that would be defending, defunding the police department. So I ask you to approve this amendment so that that doesn't happen. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Haverstock. Who do we have next, Kirk?
Next up, we have Jim Shelton. Mr. Shelton, if you'd like to unmute. Okay, since Mr. Shelton is having some difficulty, I think we'll go on next to Nathan, if you'd like to finish your comment from before. You can go ahead and unmute.
Okay, thank you so much, I apologize. And I appreciate you letting me come back. Speaking to the idea of flexibility, when all you have is a hammer, everything looks like a nail. It's sort of one of those, those things that sounds trite, but has a lot of truth to it. And by preconditioning ourselves to say, no matter what the problems of Bloomington next year, the year after, more sworn officers than what we really need, aren't we just making everything look like a nail? So I would ask you to consider, does this create flexibility? Or does this limit your flexibility to solve the problems that Bloomington will face? Not just today, not just tomorrow, but the year after that and the year after that. Thank you so much, and I yield my time.
Nathan, could you give us your full name, please?
Oh, yes, Nathan Muchter.
Thank you.
Okay, I am back. Thank you, Councilmember Piedmont Smith. Do we have anyone else for public comment, Kirk? Yes?
Yes, we're going to try Mr. Shelton again, if you'd like to unmute.
Hi, Council, Jim Shelton. I just want to offer some context. I was on the steering committee for the CJM study that the mayor commissioned in 2016 to look into issues we were having with vagrancy, et cetera, in the downtown area. That group focused on, had seven different focus groups, interviewed 200 and some people, and in January, over, from August to January of 2017, issued a report, which you can see online, and which I've given to councilmembers Flaherty and Piedmont Smith in the past. And it recommended, among many other things, that we needed more police. We needed more foot patrol, and even talked about getting IU grad, IU cadet students to help with that. That was turned over to the administration, and in January, they had a Safety, Civility, and Justice Task Force that included members from representing things like DBI, Shalom, Centerstone, United Way, Life Designs, IU, and some businesses. And they conducted a study and produced a report in June, June 15th, that said basically the same thing. We needed more police. At that time, we had 100, by the way, and that we needed more. And here we are, all these years later, and we haven't really changed that ceiling. And I just think you need to think about that when you're talking about this issue, which I very much appreciate, Councilmember Sandberg and Scambly bringing up, looking, going forward, because the population has increased since then. The number of police we have compared to other Big Ten cities of our size, or other cities around here of our size, is way low. So that's just background for you to think as you consider these things. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Shelton.
Okay, next, we have Jessica Oswald. If you'd like to unmute yourself, you can go ahead.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Great. Hi, my name is Jessica Oswald. I am currently a Neighborhood Resource Specialist with the Bloomington Police Department. I want to thank you for bringing this amendment up. I think it's really important, and I think that you touched base, Sue, on something very specific that we deal with of reducing that number from 105 to 100, and it be portrayed as a replacement for those officers for a social worker position and neighborhood resource specialist. Because I think that goes directly in relation to the, that morale of the officers currently, when they are very overworked, understaffed, and working double shifts. And I think that we need, I think it's important to remember that they are police officers, but they're also human beings, and they have families, and they have outside responsibilities to them. So when they're overworked and understaffed, what that looks like. I'm in full support of officers staying at the option to be at 105. And I thank you for bringing up that amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Oswald. Do we have anyone else, Kirk Bowden? Yes, we do.
Okay. Next up, we have Jenna Arthur, if you'd like to go ahead.
Hi, I just wanted to make a comment about the proposition to actually have 105 instead of 100. A few comments that have been made throughout the meeting that's taken place. One comment was made is that someone had taken a ride-along through Switchyard after 11:00. And I, I feel that if you were on a ride-along anywhere after 11:00, you would see the same things if you were looking. So I feel like the comment that I was on a ride-along in Switchyard after 11:00, and I don't remember the exact words, but the gist of it was, and there's some, you know, some, some things going on there that are unappealing. I wager there are unappealing things going on everywhere all over town after 11:00. Someone else that was speaking mentioned the CJM Commission on Vagrancy. And I just wanted to mention that what we need in this town are not more police officers. What we need in this town are solutions for poverty. All the places that were named that are supposed to be helping people in this community, we have a lot of people that are falling through the cracks. And if you want to take a really large systemic view on crime, when you have a pandemic and you have unemployment and people are desperate, I can assure you that fixing poverty, not fighting the poor, is the best use of any sort of resource that our community has. We do not need more police officers. The police officers that we do have should start by building relationships with all of the people that they are supposed to be serving, including and not limited to the protected population that is the people experiencing homelessness in our community. I yield my time.
Thank you, Ms. Arthur.
And we have one last commenter, RM, if you could unmute yourself and go ahead.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you for allowing me to speak, I appreciate it. My name is Renee Miller, and I will ask the same question I ask every time at this council. Is the decision you are getting ready to vote on and to make an anti-racist decision? Or is it a racist decision? And if you don't know the difference, then you haven't done your homework yet. And I please, please ask you to do that. Make, make an effort to read all you can about the, that topic and, and to find solutions for poverty and make anti-racist decisions going forward. Before you vote, stop five seconds, think about all the people we've lost just this last year to racism, and the ones we've lost today. Because you can bet we've lost some today. Before you vote, ask yourself that, and then vote with a clear conscience. Thank you, I yield my time.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Do we have anyone else? Okay.
I don't think.
Good. Okay, thank you. Now, I think, do we move on to the, the ordinance as amended?
We need to have council, council comment on the amendment.
On this, on this amendment, thank you. All right, do we have final comments on this amendment from council? Councilmember Allo?
Thank you. Can you hear me? I want to say I appreciate this amendment. I think that.
You're a needle on the hammer, shit was genius.
I think it is important to make this a statement to support increasing police officers, sworn police officers, to at least keep parity with population increases. Because clearly, it's difficult for them now. It's going to be increasingly difficult because population increases over time. So, so we do need to add more, and this makes, puts us on that track, that direction. So I appreciate the authors of the, of the amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. Further comments from the council on this amendment? Councilmember Smith?
I just want to reiterate that it's a good amendment. I appreciate it, I'll be supporting it tonight.
Thank you. Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Where to start? Okay, first, on the, what the amendment would do. It won't do anything. I'm sorry. I mean, it, you know, it kind of maybe makes the police feel better, but there's, it's not going to actually do anything. The, the ordinance as we have it written does not have a limit on the number of police officers. The number of police officers is limited simply by the budget, which is appropriation ordinance 2004, which is coming up later this evening. So if you want more police officers, then I think the issue is with the budget and not with the salary ordinance. The saying you want to keep this notion of 105 open? You don't want those positions to, you know, to go to the non-sworn staff and then not be able to have more sworn, it makes no sense. We have, we've increased the sworn number of police officers in past years at budget time, and you can do that. It's not like we're stuck at 100. I mean, next year, we could do that. So I, it just, it makes no sense to me whatsoever. Now, that aside, I also disagree with the intention behind the amendment. I do not think that we, that it's healthy for our community to continue in the vein of thinking that sworn police officers are the answer to all of our problems. I know they're overworked. Let us look at ways to reduce their workload, not by hiring more police officers, but by addressing the problems that lead people to call the police, by addressing homelessness, by addressing poverty, by addressing mental health and addiction issues. I know I've said this before, and people are sick and tired of me talking about cahoots in Eugene, Oregon, but it's a great model, and I think we need to take a closer look at it. They had, in 2019, 17% of all Eugene, Oregon's 911 calls were handled by Cahoots, which is a nonprofit mental health, social agency. And they form, the, the Cahoots staff forms relationships with people, just like Ms. Arthur said. They get to know people and, and help them connect with social services and thus avoid crime and avoid the criminal justice system, which, as we know, is a revolving door and doesn't really help anybody. So let's do things like that to take some of the work off the plate of our overworked police officers. And as a matter of fact, the five non-sworn positions, at least four of them, could very likely take some of that work off of our sworn police officers because they are neighborhood outreach specialists that can do the, the less, the non-violent sort of tasks of directing traffic and, you know, addressing neighbor complaints and things like that. And social workers, which is what we need to help people to avoid the criminal justice system altogether and fix them up with social services. And the status quo is not working, it's broken. If we've learned one thing from 2020, it's that the police system does not work well for our country and our community. It especially does not well, work well for Black Americans, for Brown and Black community members. And we need to fix it. Just doing, just, just adding numbers to the same system is not going to help anybody. It's not going to help the police, it's not going to help the long-term of our community. So, no, I, I'm opposed to 105 officers. I think we need to, to go the direction that the, the mayor has gone in this budget. But even if I didn't, I don't think I would vote for this amendment because it doesn't do anything. So, thank you. I'm, I don't, I hope I haven't personally insulted anybody. I appreciate what you, you're trying to do, you're trying to express support for the police. I just don't think that this is the way to do that.
Thank you, Councilmember Flaherty.
Sure, thanks. Yeah, I share some of the same notions that Councilmember Piedmont Smith just did. I believe several council members, you know, expressed a desire to be, to make a statement. But of course, that's what council comments for. We make statements all the time. You can put out a press release, you can say what your preferences are for policy when we give our comments. To use an amendment that does nothing at all, except actually reduce flexibility to make a statement, is an odd use of an amendment to me. And I don't, again, regardless of the substance, I wouldn't vote for it for that reason. It doesn't do anything. It affects the budget not at all, and it actually reduces flexibility if for some reason we really wanted to change things this year. It sets a cap where there is none right now. If you bought wholesale into the NOVAC report, or more specifically, one paragraph of it that is cited sometimes to us, you would put 121 as your max here. And it's worth noting, though, that, that many folks, over the course of the last several months, have pointed out some very fundamental flaws in the base level assumptions of the NOVAC report. Just a few briefly. First of all, one of the big takeaways is that our current shift scheduling structure is incredibly inefficient, and that should change, absolutely. Part of the stress in the work volumes of officers is based on the fact that our shift scheduling, shift schedules do not match the call volume in Bloomington. So that inefficiency alone is responsible for a lot of the problem. There's no analysis in the NOVAC report of the 45 sworn officers who work for IUPD, who also patrol in this city, of 85,000 or 86,000 people. If you include those officers which patrol in this city, we are well above average for cities our size in terms of officers per capita, based on FBI data. Also, the NOVAC report assumes that a 33% proactive policing target is desirable, achievable, and what we should be going for. But. that also is completely arbitrary. Many cities brag about proactive policing levels that are much lower. Also, the NOVAC report didn't consider DROs, Neighborhood Resource Specialists, and Social Workers as being a part of proactive policing, even though our department does consider them to be part of proactive policing, as shown in the written questions and answers to this budget cycle. So the numbers that the NOVAC report recommends that didn't consider any of that are also flawed by their own assumptions and, and statements, even just taking them at face value. Moreover, community policing has, is, is not a panacea, and it's not necessarily always good. There are serious scholars who work in this field who have called into question that model, as has the Movement for Black Lives and the larger national conversation we're having around these things. So what we need to be doing is looking at alternatives and looking at how to address the very substantial racial disparities and socioeconomic disparities we have in this town, in Bloomington, based on our data, and simply replicating the status quo is not going to do that. We have some task forces and commissions and things in the works to look at these things over time, but, you know, I don't know, it's disappointing to me, I guess, that, that yeah, that we're, that I feel like we're trying to replicate the status quo here, and, and I just really, really disagree with the sentiment. And again, as noted, this amendment doesn't do anything, so I'll be voting no on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Flaherty. Any more comments from our council members? Councilmember Rosenbarger?
Thank you very much. I just wanted to make a brief comment. I think folks have said a lot of the things that, and I, I agree with a lot from Councilmember Flaherty and Councilmember Piedmont Smith, so I just wanted to say in general, that is, those are also my thoughts. I don't want to repeat any of them, but I think right now, if we are just specifically talking about flexibility, I, I agree that this doesn't seem to add flexibility to me, even currently, we have 95 officers, and in a way, we have the flexibility of adding another five more. So I think we have flexibility right now, a little bit. I also agree that our officers are overworked, right, and there's a morale problem in BPD, and I think those are pretty serious issues of concern. Instead of adding more officers, what I want to do, and I think what the mayor has talked about doing, is digging deep into that. What's happening? How can we, you know, help officers not have to work overtime, and how can we take some of that work away? I think, I think it's true that we have to challenge the status quo here, and instead of adding folks to fight crime, we need to be looking at the root causes of why folks get into the criminal justice system, and we need to be devoting our resources towards supportive services to help folks stay out of the system. So I think, I think this first step in, in decreasing our number of sworn officers by five is the right step. I think we have a lot to do still, but I, I want to continue down that path. So for, for now, I'll be voting no on this amendment.
Thank you. Any further comments? Okay, Councilmember Scamblerie?
I'm happy to offer comment, but I know you haven't had a turn, you haven't had a bite of the apple yet either, Councilmember Sims, so.
And you assume that I want?
Did you want to go last?
That I want, and you assume that I want one?
Just want to make sure the opportunity is there.
No, I, I can go if, I do have something to say, and I don't have to go last, so I'll, I'll just go. And I want to thank my colleagues for all the comments that I've heard and those from the public. We all have a vision of a goal that where we want to go with, as far as policing. And I think we'll get there. I think through collaboration and community work and best practices, looking at things like cahoots and, and these sorts of things, I think we'll, we'll get there. The truth of the matter is, there's a lot of moving parts until we get to those goals. And as we move toward that model, I don't think we can kind of forget at this point where we are between now and then. I've heard the comment that it's, doesn't, it, it doesn't do anything. It, it may kind of make the police feel better, if that's what, you know, and these sort of things. I don't intend to be flippant. I think it does give flexibility for the calendar year 2021. When people say it doesn't do anything, the very real matter, or, or true to the matter, is that we probably won't have an opportunity to even hire that many in this next calendar year. I, I spoke of the moving parts, and before we get to the end goal, one of the things I think is critical, at least with the officers that we have, is that they feel supported, that there is some morale. In my previous life, I supervised multiple people. Teamwork, morale, feeling supported are all very, very important to an organization. And I think that's what this amendment speaks to as we move forward. Will things change as we move forward? I think they will. But as part of the moving parts of where we are right now, I think this is the right thing to do with some of the moving parts that some folks either can't see or don't wish to acknowledge. And I'm not advocating that we hire 120 police officers. I mean, I, I know that we'll work to a different model, but this is to address part of the moving parts, I think, within BPD as we move forward. So, Councilmember Scamblerie?
Yes, thank you. Thank you all, particularly members of the public, but also my colleagues too. These are not easy issues, and we've seen that this year. So I, again, I learn from you every time I work with you, so I'm grateful for that. Please know how much I share the goal, and I, I will allow, certainly invite Councilmember Sandberg to speak for herself too. Please know how much I share the goal of revisiting and refining our, our ideas about public safety and policing. This is an opportunity to do that that has not happened in my lifetime, and I look forward to that conversation. A couple of comments from the public in particular stood out for me. I think Ms. Miller, I don't know if she's still on the call, made the comment that we have, we need to ask a question of any ordinance or any piece of legislation, whether or not it is anti-racist, whether or not we keep that issue in mind, and I think that's an incredibly important point. One of the things I, I have come to conclude is that if we are to have a police force that is consistent with, that operates in a way that is consistent with our community's values, we need to be able to recruit and retain the best, the smartest, the best trained, and those with the most integrity. And recruiting and retaining them means taking, means having resources available at times. It remains to be seen what that is, and it also remains demonstrate, it also involves demonstrating our support, and I think that's important. I also appreciated the comment from Mr. Metzler, I'm not sure I'm pronouncing that correctly, but you said, "When you have a hammer, all problems look like nails." That's actually a favorite saying of mine, too. And one of the things, one of the ways in which I am proud of Bloomington is that we don't just have hammers. I know that several council members are involved with the Stride Center, and that, I, I have incredible hopes for the resource that has become for, for our community. We also were among the first to add social workers, certainly in the state, but probably in the Midwest as well. We are very intentionally diversifying our toolkit, and I think that's important. But adding new tools to the toolkit does not mean we can abandon other tools. And that's what this amendment is intended to speak to. So again, I appreciate your thoughtful consideration. And together with Councilmember Sandberg, I would appreciate your, your support. For my colleagues who may not support this amendment, I thank you for your consideration and what you've done. So, and.
Thank you. Do we have any? Councilmember Sandberg?
Yes, thank you. Um, I do appreciate all the feedback about a very difficult issue. I do want to correct a few things that were said with respect to Mayor Hamilton. He has been exceptionally good at listening to those of us that do have concerns about the staffing levels and the morale, and the fact that he is considering a pilot program for take-home cars, the fact that he's considering some housing allowances. He is very much moving in a proper direction with respect to dealing with our loss of good officers. I also want to make it clear that in my conversations with the officers, they too welcome the inclusion of Neighborhood Resource Officers and Social Workers, because they do acknowledge how much that does alleviate some of the, the many calls that they have to go out on that they really should not. There are roles for everyone here in the law enforcement community with respect to who is most appropriate to go out for what calls. And when you do go on these ride-alongs, and I hope nobody's minimizing the importance of that, you get a good cross-section of all the different responses that they are called on, on any given shift. And it's, it's eye-opening and it's educational. And so as you're asking us to take a look at things from the poverty prevention side, the social work side, I've, I am a social worker by, by, by experience prior to coming to my role here on the council. I'm very well aware of what social workers are equipped to do, and I'm now, through my own education, very much aware of what sworn, well-trained, well-disciplined officers do. I think not enough credit goes to Chief DeKoff. Bloomington is extremely fortunate to have a chief who does have such high standards for his officers with respect to training. And what I am learning more and more about is the pride that many of these officers do feel, in spite of their tensions, in spite of that they're tired, they make it clear staffing levels are not where they need to be, but they're still dedicated to the cause. My fear is for the ones that we are losing, the good officers that we are losing to other jurisdictions, and we do need to take that seriously. I would disagree with my colleagues who say this does nothing. I know from my conversations that it will do something, and is there more for us to do? Absolutely, in the coming year. That's going to be one of my focuses to work with the BPD, along with many of the other task forces that are already in play. How can we be more efficient? How can we be more effective? Those are all conversations we need to have in the future. Right now, we're dealing with the budget, we're dealing with staffing levels, and I hope that I can get some solid support from my colleagues. Does do something. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other final comments from council on amendment number two for ordinance 20-22? Councilmember Rallo? Go ahead, Councilmember Rallo. I think he's stuck.
Oh, he's frozen.
Okay, go ahead, Councilmember Rallo.
I'm sorry, I'll be brief. I just wanted to say, I think Councilmember Sandberg really articulated this well, and I think that this is not in an action that is, it, it has import. It's important to address the fact that we, we do need to keep parity with population. We need to send a signal of support to the police. And are under stress. And I also wanted to, acknowledging this, and, and their proposition to have take-home cars and housing allowances. So I hope that continues to communicate to officers that they're supported by our
Okay. Thank you. I think you were finished. Okay, do we have? Were you finished, Councilmember Rallo? Yes, okay.
Yes, I don't know how much of that came through, but sums up to, sums up to the sponsors.
All right, thank you.
For the, it's important.
Thank you. Any further comments from council? Okay, seeing none. Clerk Bowden, can we call the roll on ordinance number two? I'm sorry, amendment number two for ordinance 20-22?
Yes. Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Scamblerie?
Yes.
Rosenbarger? Councilmember Rosenbarger, we actually could not hear you on that.
Hey, no?
Thank you.
Okay.
Councilmember Sims?
Yes.
Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
No.
And Councilmember Flaherty?
No.
Okay.
Okay, and that amendment passes 5-3? Zero? Thank you. Okay, now we move on to the ordinance as amended. And Ms. Parliamentarian, to keep me straight, we do go back for council comments and then public comment on the full ordinance as amended.
Council questions and public comments?
Yes, yes, okay.
Comment, yeah.
Thank you, thank you. Okay. Council comments or questions, I'm sorry, council questions for the entire ordinance as amended, ordinance 20-22? Before we go to the public, so do we have any comments on this ordinance as amended? Or questions? Okay, seeing none. Clerk Bowden, do we have any public waiting for this to comment on the full ordinance as amended?
Not that I can see yet.
Okay, I will remind the public, if you'd like to speak, you can use the raised hand function in Zoom or send us a message during chat. So we'll give that just a few more seconds. Okay, seeing none. We'll return to council for final comments. Okay, seeing none. Clerk Bowden, could you please call the roll?
Yes, Councilmember Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Scamblerie?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yeah.
Sims?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Thank you, and that passes 8-0. Okay, next ordinance?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I move ordinance 2023 introduced and read by clerk by the title and synopsis only.
Now second.
Thank you. It moved to the second. Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, Councilmember Rallo?
Yes.
Scamblerie?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Thank you. Could the clerk please read?
Ordinance 2023, an ordinance fixing the salaries of appointed officers, non-union and absentee employees for all the departments of the city of Bloomington, Monroe County, Indiana, for the year 2021. The synopsis is as follows. This ordinance sets the maximum 2021 salary for all appointed officers, non-union and absentee employees for all the departments of the city of Bloomington, Indiana. You do pass recommendation for ordinance 2023 was 3 6 0.
Thank you. And who do we have presenting tonight? Is Ms. Shaw speaking on this? There she is. I'm sorry, go ahead.
First, I'd like to say I move that ordinance 2023 be adopted.
Okay.
Thank you. We have a motion to second. Ms. Shaw, could you please present?
Yes, thank you. Can everyone hear me okay? I'm having technical difficulty from my city hall office, so hopefully we'll get through this without any more problems. Ordinance 2023 sets 2020 Ordinance twenty twenty-three sets 2021 pay grades and salary ranges for appointed officers, non-union ASME employees. Consistent with prior years, administration recommends a 2% increase in civil city salaries and salary ranges associated with civil city pay rates that have been adjusted by the 2% to reflect the increase for 2021. Labor trades and craft pay rates will increase to 2.5% according to the 2019-2022 collective bargaining agreement between the city and ASME. And in 2017, the administration, in cooperation with the city council, determined to increase the common law minimum pay rates over the following years over to at least the the living wage, which will be thirteen twenty-nine in 2021. New position requests for for this upcoming year are in the Economic and Sustainable Development Department, the Transportation Demand Manager, position of a grade seven with a fiscal impact of around $79,000. And in Public Works, the request of parking garage supervisor, grade four, and a parking garage assistant manager, grade five. On these positions are due to the necessary, it's the increase in parking facilities and additional staff necessary to service these facilities. And these positions will not be hired until those resources, those facilities become online. In the Community and Family Resources Department, they are changing their volunteer network assistant coordinator, currently a grade six, to special projects coordinator, grade six. That position's been vacant for some time. This position will be a liaison to nonprofit and other social service agencies. And the 2021 ordinance also adds an engineering department, which we've discussed. And the transportation and traffic engineer, currently a grade eleven, will be the director of this newly created department. And that title will change to city engineer, and it'll be a grade twelve. There's no fiscal impact to that. In HR, we will change our office manager position to a special projects manager, which will be a grade eight and was formerly a grade five as an office manager. And there's several title changes in ITFs, which I won't go over those in great detail once anyone wants me to. But there is one great change in that department. And that's the office manager changing from a grade four to a grade five with a fiscal impact of about $4,800. In Parks and Recreation Department, the urban foresters pay grade was reviewed, and the grade was increased from a six to a seven with a fiscal impact of about $2,800. And then there are three part-time customer service reps that are currently grade two will become customer service reps, grade three. In Planning and Transportation, the grade five zoning planner will become a grade six zoning planner and GIS analyst with a fiscal impact of around $2,600. And then, as we've discussed many times, the police will repurpose five of their officer first-class positions into one data analyst, grade six, and two social workers, grade eight, and two neighborhood resource specialists, grade five. And these changes result in a cost savings around $38,000, $30,800. And then the evidence room clerk has been full-time since the beginning of the year, and we removed the .5 FTE from that. That was an oversight on our part. And then finally, in the police department, the crime analyst position will now be called a data analyst. And in Public Works, they're creating a new division called Parking Services. The Parking Enforcement Division will move from police to this division in Public Works. And all the parking garage employees will move into the Public Works Operations and Facilities Division in Parking Services. The Parking Services Director will also have a grade change from a grade eight to a grade nine. And then through the three parking enforcement officers who are grade three will become three meter technicians, grade three, focusing on maintaining, repairing, parking meters. And I'm getting closer to the end. Utilities will have two meter readers, grade 103, and those are ASME grades. They're becoming meter service persons, and their grade will change to 105. And this will accommodate the progression of the smart to the smart metering system that they've been working on over in the Utilities Department. And then ordinance also moves the communications operations from the Transmission and Distribution Division in the CDU over to, in a labor and alignment, the Transmission and Distribution Division to the Environmental Division. These are just changes in appointment structure. In addition, there are six utilities, customer service or customer relations reps and cashiers who are currently a grade two, and they're all becoming customer service customer relations representatives, and they're all grade three. The Public Information Specialist, grade seven, received a great increase and a title change, Communications Manager, grade eight. And then all city positions that were titled secretary will become administrative assistants. And finally, in HR, we are adding an additional part-time administrative assistant, grade three, at a .6 FTE. And then police, they are adding three and a half telecommunicators, grade six, to the central emergency dispatch. And that is a part of the PSLIT budget. Public Works will add four additional customer service security specialists to support the new parking facilities. And like I said earlier, that will not be until they're actually needed when those facilities come online. I'm happy to take any questions at this time. That's a lot for that one.
Thank you, Ms. Shaw. Do we have any questions from council members? Okay, seeing none. We'll go to the public for public comment. I'll remind the public to use the raised hand function in Zoom or send us a note on chat. And this is comments on ordinance twenty dash twenty-three. Do we have any takers, Clark Bowden?
It does not, looks like it right now. I'm just gonna run through and double check.
Okay, yeah, give it a second.
I just received a message in the chat that Renee Miller would like to comment again. She should be ready to do so.
I'm not sure if this is actually, I'm not sure if this is actually the right place to make this comment, but I hope it is. It has to do with the smart metering. I am assuming that it's already a done deal. Sadly.
I'm sorry, did you say smart metering?
The meters that are gonna go online, the parking meters that are gonna be online parking meters.
I don't believe this ordinance addresses that.
I heard something about that in there. Maybe I didn't. So my apologies for that. I just think that that particular thing disenfranchises the poor. And and I'm sorry that that wasn't the right time to speak on that subject. I would like to to end my comment there, sorry.
Okay, thank you. Do we have anyone else? Okay, seeing none from the public. We'll go back to council for final comments. Councilmember Flaherty?
Yes, I just wanted to, I'm gonna, I'm gonna vote no on this ordinance, and I wanted to just briefly note that I won't. I'll be doing the same for appropriation ordinance twenty oh four, but because the reason is the same, I'll reserve my comments and explanation until that ordinance. Thank you.
Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes, thank you. I wanted to talk about two things related to this ordinance. The first is something that was brought to my attention just today, and I know that many of you received an email from Reverend Forrest Gilmore from the Beacon Shalom Center. They're in the process of changing their name, so I'm not sure what to call that group. But he pointed out something that I really should have noticed earlier, and that's the very small increase in the living wage as indicated by the city. The city of Bloomington has a living wage that it's, it must follow itself as a minimum. And also, any organization that has a significant contract or receives a significant grant from the city also has to commit to paying that living wage. For 2020, it's $13.21. And for 2021, it's only $13.29. That's only eight cents more. That's 0.6% increase. That's a very small increase, and I think this year, the Consumer Price Index has just been going up and down because of the pandemic. And the reading that we normally base the living wage increase on is at the end of June. But since then, the Consumer Price Index has gone up quite a lot. So I'll, I don't propose a change to the salary ordinance, but I do intend to pursue a change to the living wage in the coming months. I need to, of course, find out what the economic impact would be for the city. I don't think we have a lot of employees that are at that level. I think most of them make more than the living wage. But I'm hoping that we can work to to increase our living wage minimum, because I think it's really the, just the way it fell this year, the increase is totally insufficient to make up for increased cost of living. The other thing I wanted to address was the Transportation Demand Management position, which has been placed in the Economic and Sustainability Department. I disagree with that placement. I think it should be placed in the Planning and Transportation Department as our TDM consultant recommended to us. At the beginning of this evening, Mayor Hamilton, you know, mentioned this as one of the sticking points of the budget this year, and he said reasonable people may disagree what the best place is for this position. And I just like to point out that four elected officials, four council members, have reached out to the mayor and have stated publicly that they disagree with placing this position in the Department of Economic and Sustainable Development. Whereas he is one elected individual, and he has decided that it is best placed in that department. So I know that the mayor is the executive and that he is basically in charge of managing the city's affairs. But I do think that if reasonable people disagree, and four council members have come to him with this with this complaint about the proposal, I think it would have been reasonable for him to change it. That said, I don't want to hold up the whole salary ordinance, so I will be supporting it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Piedmont Smith. Any more comments from council members? Councilmember Rosenbarger?
I have one. Thanks. I didn't know if you were gonna see me or not. Okay.
Yep, you're down in the bottom on the screen. Yes, I got you.
Okay. At Committee of the Whole, I said I was leaning toward a no vote on this ordinance tonight. I share a lot of the same sentiments of Councilmember Piedmont Smith on this. Part of me doesn't want to hold up the process. And, you know, I think there, there is a lot of good in this budget. I definitely have some concerns on how, how the budget process happened with the administration and with council. I think it's telling that the four new council members at Committee of the Whole said they, they were thinking of voting no on this, and that one, I think most of them tell, like, one reason is it didn't feel like a collaboration. So, you know, this is our first budget process in this, as these roles, and I think that is a major takeaway, and I hope, you know, I hope the administration hears that and we can work to make changes for next year. I think a lot of us on council want to be really involved in this budget process and have, you know, big ideas and priorities that we want in the budget, and I think we can have a different process to get there. The mayor talked a lot about collaboration. He also talked about listening. I think there's a major difference between listening and collaboration. With the Transportation Demand Management Plan, I agree with Councilmember Piedmont Smith. Four of us felt very strongly that this should be somewhere else. And I also made a note that reasonable people may disagree. We also hired a consultant, an expert in transportation demand management, who said this position should be placed in transportation and planning or public works. That consultant did not say to put this in the Economic and Sustainability Department. So I also trust our experts on that. So, so for me, I have voted no on ordinances in the past because I disagreed with the process. And I think that is important, that I think there are times that because we start in the wrong place, and we might not necessarily have a good process in place, we arrive at the wrong decision. And so what I want to do as a council member is work to get some of our processes in the city changed, so that we're thinking about a comprehensive plan from the beginning, so that we're thinking about our transportation policy and our sustainability action plan. And, you know, we're selecting projects, we're selecting how we spend our money with very sincere purpose. And so for this one tonight, I plan to vote yes, because I think this budget has a lot of good pieces in it. And I want to support those pieces. But moving forward, I will continue to vote no if I think we have arrived at the wrong decision based on where we started. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Rosenbarger. Do we have any other comments from council? Okay, I'll take a bite. I agree with some of the comments my colleagues have made. There are many good things in this budget. I am one of the folks, I'm not so sure that where the TDM has landed at, where it's currently at is where it's going to remain. And I know there's some disagreement on placement, but I also think that there's, as we say, reasonable people will be able to discuss and determine where it best fits. One thing that I do know, that us as council members, no matter where that position is, and particularly those that are very, very strong advocates on what their duties will be, we'll make sure that that position is held accountable. So I'm a little bit less concerned on where it's placed as to what its effectiveness is going to be in responding to what we need for the community. Secondly, I agree with Councilmember Piedmont Smith on the living wage for 2021. And I look forward to working with her any way that I can, or with the rest of my colleagues as well, on addressing that as we move forward. She made a comment that she was surprised that she missed it. Well, so, so was I. Surprised that she missed it, and I can't believe that I did as well, but I look forward to working as we address that moving forward. Point zero six percent is, well, I just won't speak on that, on that amount of increase. I won't speak on that right now. Okay, do we have any other final comments? Okay. Clark Bowden, would you please call the roll, ordinance twenty dash twenty-three?
Yes, Councilmember Scambalory?
Yes.
Councilmember Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Flaherty?
No.
Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
And Rallo?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. That ordinance passes seven-one. Okay, thank you. Moving to the next ordinance.
Mr. Chair, I move ordinance twenty twenty-four be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second.
Okay, thank you. It's been moved to second. Clark, would you please call the roll?
Ordinance twenty twenty-four, to fix the salary of all elected city officials for the city of Bloomington for the year 2021. Synopsis is as follows. This ordinance sets the maximum 2021 salary rate for all elected city officials for the city of Bloomington. Your due pass recommendation was nine zero zero.
Okay, thank you very, very much.
I move that ordinance twenty twenty-four be adopted.
Second.
Thank you. Do we call the roll or move into comments, Ms. Clark? I'm sorry. Ms. Shaw, you're here to address that. Thank you very much.
Would you like me to present the ordinance?
I would, I would.
Okay, thank you.
Got screens and trying to keep things straight, so I do appreciate you.
Yeah, no, it's a lot. I did, thank you. You're doing a great job. Ordinance twenty twenty-four sets the maximum 2021 salary rates for city of Bloomington elected officials. This includes the mayor, U-City council members, and the city clerk. And these maximum These maximum salaries represent a two percent increase. In addition, the mayor's salary, he's getting his second, three recommended adjustments from the salary studies. He had put those off. And consistent with this current ordinance, ordinance 2024 also assigns an additional 1,000 per year for city council president and 800 year per year for positions. I'm happy to take any questions at this time.
Thank you. Any council members have any questions for Ms. Shaw?
How much does the cat get as her salary? All right.
I don't have an answer.
Attend every meeting.
Okay, Councilmember, I'm sorry, Clerk Bowden.
Um, just a just a procedural note. I think that we actually skipped the vote on the introduction of this ordinance.
Well, that's what I was trying to do and then Ms. Shaw, it's my mistake.
I think it was mine too.
Oh, that's okay.
I apologize.
That's okay. Can we call the roll? It's not your fault.
It's all of us. Okay. Councilmember Rosenbarger?
Yeah.
Councilmember Sims?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
And Scandaluri?
Yes.
Okay, and again, my apologies for missing that.
No, you're fine. That passes eight oh. And now, do any council members have any questions for Ms. Shaw on ordinance 20 dash 24? Okay, seeing none, we'll go to the public for public comments on ordinance 20 dash 24. Remember to use the raised hand function in Zoom or send us a message on chat. Okay, I'm not going to say going once, going twice. I don't like that. We'll give them just a few more seconds. Okay, seeing none. We'll go back to council for final comments on this ordinance. Okay, seeing none. Kirk Bowden, could you please call the roll?
Yes, and we will start with you, Councilmember Sims?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Scandaluri?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Thank you all.
Thank you. That passes eight zero. Now moving to appropriation ordinance 20 dash oh five.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. That's okay. I thought I was the only one tonight. Go ahead. I'm sorry.
Um, Mr. Chair, I move that appropriation ordinance 2005 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved in second. Will the clerk please read?
Call the roll.
Okay, I'll get one or two of them. They can't be wrong both times. Kirk, would you please call the roll?
Yes. Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Scandaluri?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yeah.
And Sims?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
With your permission, go ahead and read.
Yes, please, clerk read. Thank you. I'm trying to read your lips. I'm not very good with that on Zoom, so thank you. Please read.
Appropriation ordinance 2005, an ordinance adopting a budget for the operation, maintenance, debt service, and capital improvements for the water and wastewater utility departments of the city of Bloomington, Indiana for the year 2021. Synopsis is as follows. This ordinance approved by the Utility Services Board, Utilities Service Board in August of 2020 sets the water and wastewater budgets for 2021. You do, the due pass recommendation for appropriation ordinance 2005 is nine zero zero.
Thank you.
I move that appropriation ordinance 2005 be adopted.
Second.
Okay, been moved in second. Thank you. Mr. Kelson, how are you? Would you like to present this evening?
Very well. I hope my microphone is working.
Perfect.
Excellent. Good evening. I'm Vic Kelson, Director of Utilities for the city. I'm happy to be here tonight to to bring up our budget for 2021. As I just quickly go over just a few numbers for you. Our budget for 2021 on water is $17.7 million. That's a reduction of about $1.5 million compared to 2020. That's almost eight percent. For sewer, it's $22.8 million, also a reduction of about $1.5 million, which is about six percent. And for the stormwater utility, the total budget is $3.1 million, which is a reduction of $0.1 million, or about three percent. Altogether, our budget is $43.6 million. That's a reduction of 3.6 million, which is seven percent overall. What's important about the way our budget works is that we're able to sustain all of our operations in their normal fashion in the coming year, but only if we reduce the amount of money that's set aside for extensions and replacements. So the way our budget works is we budget all of personnel services, we budget supplies and contract services and all of our debt service. And what's left over is called extensions and replacements, and that's used to pay for ongoing capital repairs and things like that. For 2020, from 2020 to 2021, we're going to see a reduction of about $0.4 million for, sorry, of about $1.3 million in E and R for water, about $0.4 million for sewer, and about $0.1 million for storm. I'm happy to take any questions than any members I have for our budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any questions for Mr. Kelson from council? Okay, seeing none, we'll go to the public for public comment on ordinance. I'm sorry, appropriation ordinance 20 dash zero five. Please use the raised hand function in chat or send us a note in in Zoom. Raise hand function in Zoom or send us a note in chat. Do we have any takers, Clerk Bowden? No?
Sorry about that delay.
That's okay.
I'm looking for any takers. It is possible that there could be one that was sent in the chat that was not sent to me directly. So if you sent one in the chat to the host, if you could send one to me, that'd be great. If you just want to give it another second or two.
Well, aren't we all hosts? I don't see anything either.
Um, yeah, sometimes with the chats, they'll send it directly to Mr. Lucas as the primary host, and they won't send it to me. So he stepped away for just a moment, so I just wanted to make sure.
It's okay. Give it, give it just another second or two. Okay, I don't see any. We'll go back to council members for final comments. Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Well, I just wanted to thank Mr. Kelson for his very succinct summation of the CBU budget and the explanation about extensions and replacements. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments? Okay, I would like to just say that I am the ex-official member on the Utility Service Board, and I am very impressed with not only Mr. Kelson but his staff and how we take care of things and how we are a very good steward of our ratepayers funds. I ask a lot of questions about ratepayer funds. And I know some things aren't possible. For an example, I was wondering, you know, if we had a budget reduction of seven percent, why couldn't we just drop water rates for our customers by seven percent? But I know that's not the process, and that's kind of the way we think. But I also, again, will say I know that we are a very good steward of those funds. I also want to say that I really, really appreciate what we've set up as far as helping our customers that may have difficulty meeting some of their their bills and and some of the things that we've got set up to help our our customers. I think that's very, very important, and I really appreciate you and the staff, in particular, our customer service people. So, um, thank you. Okay, did I say a hand up? No, I did not. Okay. I think we're about ready for roll call on appropriation ordinance 20 dash oh five. Or correct me if I'm wrong.
Okay.
Thank you.
With that, we'll start with Councilmember Piedmont Smith.
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Scandaluri?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, and that passes eight zero.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Mr. Kelson. Thank you. Okay, we can move to appropriation ordinance 20 dash oh six.
Mr. Chair, I move that appropriation ordinance 2006 be introduced and read by the chair by title and synopsis only. And by the clerk, by title and synopsis only.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved in second. Madam Clerk, will you please read?
I got really excited because I thought I didn't have to do it. So we will start with Councilmember Flaherty.
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Scandaluri?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
And Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Would you please read?
Yes, appropriation ordinance 2006 appropriations and tax rates for Bloomington Transportation Corporation for 2021. There is not a synopsis, and your due pass recommendation was nine zero zero.
Mr. Chair, I move that appropriation ordinance 2006 be adopted.
Second.
Need a second. Okay, thank you. Hi, Mr. May, can you please present for us?
Good evening. Lou May, General Manager, Bloomington Public Transportation Corporation. Again, thank you for the opportunity to talk about our proposed 2021 budget again tonight for the third time. There have been no changes to the proposed 2021 budget from what I originally presented in August. We are proposing a budget of $14,505,793 in 2021, and that's a 3.8% increase over 2020. So with that, I'm glad to entertain any comments or questions that you may have at this time.
Thank you very much. We've heard a lot of your presentations, and I'm always impressed with them. And I think my colleagues has as well. Now, do I have any questions of Mr. May from our colleagues or from my council members? Okay, thank you. Seeing none, we'll go to the public for public comment. Please utilize the raised hand functions in Zoom and/or send us a note in the chat so we can recognize you and allow you to get your comments in. Okay. Going once. No, I won't do that. Okay, we'll go back to my council colleagues for any final comments on appropriation ordinance 20 dash zero six. Okay, seeing none. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Absolutely. Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Scandaluri?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
And Flaherty?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, and that appropriation ordinance passes eight zero. Thank you again, Mr. May, always impressed with your presentation.
Your support.
Thank you. Okay, moving to the next appropriation ordinance.
Mr. Chair, I move that appropriation ordinance 2004 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second.
Okay, been moved in second. Ms. Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Yes, Councilmember Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Scandaluri?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yeah.
Sims?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
And Smith?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, would you please read?
Appropriation ordinance 2004, an ordinance for appropriations and tax rates establishing 2021 civil city budget for the city of Bloomington. There's no synopsis, and your due pass, or your due pass recommendation for appropriation ordinance 2004 was four, three, two.
Thank you very, very much. I see Mr. Underwood. Would you?
I move
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I move that appropriation ordinance 2004 be adopted.
Second.
Okay, now it's been moved in second. Mr. Underwood, if you're prepared?
I am prepared.
Please present. Thank you.
Good evening. I will be, try to be just as succinct as well. We are looking at appropriation ordinance 2004, and as I explained two weeks ago at the duly noted and advertised public hearing on the budget, we moved from program budgets, which have a different flavor in August now to the state's required forms. You'll be voting on appropriation ordinance 2004. The first half of that is what we call the statutory funds. You have an adopted budget, adopted levy, and adopted tax rate. And the second half of the ordinance is those home rule funds, which you have to vote on. We have to submit to the DLGF. They will look at the statutory ones and do a deep dive, and then they'll give us a thumbs up with any changes when they submit our budget order prior to the end of the year. There's three actions that you all can take on this ordinance. You can pass it as is, you can cut it, or you can vote to not approve it. The question was asked last week, what would happen if that latter would happen? Is the incense, we go back to the last appropriated budget, and we go back to the last levy that was approved for those funds. So the Parks Department and the the general fund would move back. We would lose approximately about $1 million a year in revenues, and that would be lost each succeeding year. The only opportunity would go for The only opportunity would go for an excess levy, and I can tell you that those are most next to impossible to get those approved as long as you have sufficient cash balances on hand. So on the one hand, you're applauded for doing well. On the other hand, you're penalized for doing well. That said, tonight, we're looking at thirty-one different funds for a total of ninety-five million dollars. This is a decrease of about three point five, six, seven million dollars or three point six percent. That's primarily due to a decrease of five million dollars in the food beverage fund. In the general fund, we're looking at forty-eight, five, five, two. This increase is a total increase of one point eight million dollars or three point eight percent. And the majority of that is reflected in the two million dollars of recovered forward expenditures and a hundred ninety-three, a hundred ninety-four thousand dollars decrease in property tax rates. If we adjust for those, then basically we have a zero percent increase in the proposed general fund, city general fund budget. In the Parks Department, the budget request is eight point five million dollars. This is an increase, a decrease of about a hundred and five thousand dollars or one point two percent. As I noted last time, there was a confluence of getting the revised local income tax estimates. They came in too late for us to incorporate. But we will see that come in at about a million dollars plus. So essentially that will go into the general fund and supplement those reserves that we had planned to use out of the general fund for the total budget. With that, I will stop and be happy to answer any questions you all might have.
Thank you very much. Questions from my council colleagues? Councilmember Scambaluri?
Yes, thank you. I'm going to do something I very rarely do, and that's ask you to repeat what you just said because it's important. Could you comment again on what the implications are of not approving a budget? Or of not approving the budget as it's proposed to us, what that means for 2021 going forward? Because I think that's an important thing, so.
Yes, as you know, the levy gets adjusted every year with a maximum of five percent. This year, the estimate's about one million dollars in additional revenues that we received for the increase in that levy. If you would vote to, if your vote did not pass the budget as shown, we would forfeit that million dollars in 2021 and going forward. So we would always, that million dollars will be lost. And we would have to make cuts in services and other budgets to account for that. The other thing is you have passed salary ordinances this evening. We have statutory requirements for police and fire and ASME where we have union contracts that have been approved by all the bodies. That we would have to pay those increases. We wouldn't necessarily have to pass, pay the two percent for non-union. However, that would mean that we would also have to find cuts in those budgets to pay for those increases. So it's very dire consequences, both short term and long term, should you choose not to approve this ordinance as presented.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions? Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes, thank you. And if I asked this last time, I apologize. I had it highlighted in my packet and I did not put an answer next to it. So this is a question about the change, the changes between August and September thirtieth.
Yes.
And you said there are some changes. Most of the changes in category three are related to a rate increase for Duke Energy.
For Duke Energy, yes.
So there was a almost fifty thousand dollar increase in category three for the local roads and streets funds. And I, now it's really sounding familiar. So I think you did answer this and I apologize. How is that, that's streetlights, that comes out of that fund?
Yes. So that's a significant increase for those.
Thank you so much. And again, I'm sorry I didn't write that down.
All right.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions? Okay, seeing none, we'll go to public for any public comment on appropriation ordinance twenty dash oh four. Please utilize the raised hand function in Zoom. Looks like two have been used and/or send us a note on chat. Clark Bowden.
So first up, we have Nathan. If you'd like to go ahead and unmute yourself, please.
Thank you so much. I would like to speak clearly and directly in opposition to the line items for rubber bullets and gas masks. These so-called non-lethal or less lethal weapons and tools to brutalize our community give the police an option to do harm to members of our community. That's what they're there for. Without these options, we create a situation where that is taken away. Earlier, I, again, I spoke and I agree with the council, the council member agreed with me about when all you have is a hammer, everything looks like a nail. Well, if you don't have a hammer, you can't hit yourself on the thumb. We've seen from across the country that consistently these weapons are misused in fashions that they are not intended for. A rubber bullet is supposed to be bounced off the ground into someone's leg. And consistently, they have been shot directly into people's faces, directly into people's skulls, leading to permanent blindness, disability and death. So I would urge this council to make our community safer by not allowing these weapons to come into our community. Thank you. I yield my time.
Thank you. Who do we have next, Ms. Bowden? You're muted.
Sorry. Next up, Alex Goodlad. Alex, if you'd like to go ahead.
Ready. All right. So I would like to join Nathan in opposition to the gas masks and rubber bullets. And I would like to also mention that I have emailed each and every one of you about my opposition and really trying to figure out what to do to keep the uses on the protesters and other such people, like, like, keep keeping, keeping crowd control out of our community. It's not helpful to our community, doesn't keep us safe. And I would wish that I would get more response. I thank Piedmont Smith for responding and at least, you know, at least offering alternatives, though I don't entirely agree with the alternatives. I would like to hear more response because this is a serious issue. This is why we're, you know, this is why, what, why we were out in the streets in the summer. Because of a police brutality and because of unnecessary use and unnecessary purchase of crowd control. So as far as I'm concerned, if we're not taking rubber bullets and gas masks out of the budget, then then we haven't accomplished, the protests haven't, like, they haven't accomplished much at all. I mean, they've changed the discussion. I don't want to downplay that. It's good that we now have the discussion. But there needs to be policy, there needs to be concrete change. And this is a big one. It's not a huge amount in the grand scheme of things in the budget. They literally don't need it. And Decoff has, he's talked about why he needs gas masks and fifteen thousand dollars worth. It's not because BPD or the Poison Control Center, like I've been suggested. They're not the Poison Control Center. And if they did, if they were, for that purpose, they don't need fifteen thousand dollars worth of it. So I would strongly suggest that, and Chief Decoff said he needed it because of training purposes of the problem, tear gas. So let's take that very seriously. And let's, let's, let's do something meaningful in this year. It, 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 just, you know, getting rid of that small amount of money makes a huge difference in our community. And same with rubber bullets. And if you're not going to do that, at least ban the use on the crowd, like, like has been suggested. Do that too. But if we're going to ban it, then why not just take it out of the budget? So do that. And thanks for listening and sorry for rambling. I'll yield my time.
Thank you, Mr. Goodlad. Who else do we have, Clark Bowden?
Next up, we have Molly Stewart. Molly, if you will unmute yourself, you can go ahead.
Yes, thank you. My name is Molly Stewart, for the record. And I have to express my disappointment with how the council has addressed this year's budget, especially the police budget. For several months now, a large number of community members have expressed the public comments during meetings and directly to council members, specifically regarding the issues of equipment and staffing and policing philosophies. Many community members regularly attended meetings to express their disagreement with adding to police stockpiles of gas masks and other items, which, by Chief Decoff's own admission, have not been used for over ten years since writing as a result of IU Sports, which is its own issue. These items are on the budget almost every year, which means that unless the department does not end up using the funds to buy the equipment, which also might be its own issue, there must be a stockpile of them since they're not being used. I have asked council members to request an inventory of these items, and to my knowledge, that was not asked for or received. The public have clearly asked for a reduction of items that are unnecessary for our police force to have, and we have been ignored in this. The requests of overpoliced, black, brown and impoverished citizens and their allies have been ignored. And instead of coming to a compromise, earlier tonight, we saw that only the requests of police officers and civilian staff and their families have been met. A compromise has not been reached. No defunding is occurring. Instead, there are more resources being promised to the police department in the form of housing stipends or allowances and take-home vehicles. It is not clear to me what the sway of the department is over this government, considering how many people in this community spoke out against unnecessary financial resources going to the police department instead of the many, many other worthy services that can prevent crime in this city. As a reminder to the council members who spoke very clearly in favor of the police department earlier tonight, we hear your lack of concern for the people in the community who do not feel safe around police officers. The message is loud and clear that some people in this community matter more to you than others. There's so much evidence, both nationwide and from our own community, that police departments are not the best way to provide justice, especially for residents that are not privileged by their race, socioeconomic status or other aspect of life. Let me remind everyone here that our police department arrests and incarcerates black citizens at a rate of over twenty percent, whereas these citizens only make up five percent of the city's population. This is incredibly disproportionate and should not be acceptable. We've also seen several white, right-wing Blue Lives Matter events that have demonstrated an incredibly suspicious amount of allyship among law enforcement and people who truly believe that black lives do not matter. Police simply do not police political protesters equally, and they do not police citizens equally. Implicit bias trainings do not address explicit bias. They just take more tax dollars away from other needed resource recipients. The community has asked to be heard, and it appears that we were not. But that just means that we will be louder next time, and we remember the events of this budget cycle at the next council election. Thank you.
You got my vote.
Thank you, Ms. Stewart. Do we have anyone else?
You've got my vote.
Yes. Next up, we've got Gregory May. Mr. May, if you'd like to unmute yourself?
Thank you. My name is Greg May. I work at Centerstone. I'm the Director of Administration for the Adult and Family Services Division. I've spoken at a number of these meetings in support of Bloomington Police Department, specifically the DRO program, police social workers, and the efforts of Chief Decoff to bring the Stride Center to fruition. As I've mentioned in my previous correspondence, my staff work regularly with the Bloomington Police Department, especially the Downtown Resource Officer Program and Police Social Worker. It needs to be known that there is a high level of collaboration and cooperation, making sure that vulnerable citizens in this community have care and resources provided to them that meet their needs. Services are often delivered in parks, homeless camps, and any other place where a person may be in need. As previously stated, people call the police for all kinds of things. People will continue to call the police for all kinds of things. In order to keep the city safe, the council should approve the positions that have been requested by the Bloomington Police Department. I would ask that before you make decisions about defunding the police, that you take time to learn what the people and positions do to keep this community safe while connecting people to services and service providers. I would encourage you to visit a homeless camp, visit Seminary Park, visit Switchyard Park. Find out what is going on in this community before you make decisions about defunding police. In addition, getting to know the staff and the programs offered, take time to listen to someone's story in one of those parks. Ask them how these services have changed their life, saved their life, and how these are the only service providers that reach out to the vulnerable members of our community. BPD is innovative in many ways. Chief Decoff is a leader who is, in my opinion, working to make this city safe. As you heard this evening, the city is growing. BPD needs to be funded. Defunding the police is irresponsible, and you have evidence that the city is growing. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. May. Do we have any more? Yes. You're muted.
This is going to make me crazy. Next up is Jana Arthur, if you'd like to go ahead.
Hi, so I want to quickly state that we don't need any rubber bullets or gas masks being spent fifteen thousand dollars on. And I was originally going to read a statement of a protester that lost her eye from being shot in the face. However, Mr. May's comments have got me going to talk about something else. So he stated a few different agencies and noted that Centerstone was one of those agencies in cooperation with the police that is tasked with providing vulnerable people, his words, having their needs met. He also stated to visit a homeless camp before defunding the police. And I just want the community to realize how preposterous that statement is. He also mentioned have the people that are in the homeless camps talk about the services they are receiving. And let me tell you that those people are my family. And I know the stories about the services that they are receiving in this community because I hear them every single day about how people are falling through the cracks and not receiving the benefits that they need. And the police, giving more money to the police and buying gas masks and rubber bullets is not going to change the fact that we have three hundred people experiencing homelessness in this community. And the agencies that are supposed to be helping them are not doing that. Yeah, and I'm going to yield the rest of my time because I'm grossly off topic, but Mr. May was also grossly off topic. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Arthur. We have more?
Yes, next up have HL, if you would like to unmute yourself.
Hello, my name is Heather Lake. I, I have a statement. I have lived here in Bloomington for twenty-one years. Bloomington is a good town. I am not sure what BPD thinks is going to happen here that will necessitate the use of over fifteen thousand dollars for gas masks and the use of rubber bullets. This has come up during a time where there is racial unrest and peaceful protests about police violence. The violence that has been done at these protests has been done or ramped up by groups that are coming into our town just to cause trouble. It is suspicious as to timing of wanting all these weapons and spending money on these things instead of social services that will help the community be a better community, where everyone is served and everyone is taken care of, is a much better use of the funds. Thank you. I yield my time.
Thank you for your comments.
Next, we have Linda Grove Paul, who would like to speak. And if you'll give me a second, I will get down to unmute her. Ms. Grove Paul, if you'd like to go ahead.
Yes, thank you very much. As she said, my name is Linda Grove Paul. I too work for Centerstone, although it's not the reason I'm here. I've been a social worker in this community for about twenty-five years. And a couple of points I want to make, I think, one, and I really appreciated Councilmember Sims talking about the fact that making change is not easy. It takes time. And I think, you know, I very much appreciate the fact that there are a lot of people who have very good intentions in terms of thinking about what are some of the things that we need to do differently. But a lot of that just doesn't happen overnight. And in particular, I feel like, you know, Bloomington is a community, like so many of you. I moved to Bloomington. I moved to Bloomington, and, you know, I loved it. I loved the progressive ideals, the innovation, all of the work that was happening. But anymore, it really feels like there's so much divisiveness when we talk amongst ourselves. Even, you know, people who are approaching a lot of the same issues in the same way, have a lot of political, you know, similarities, that we start conversations where we just put the other person on the defensive. And I understand there's a national narrative. I absolutely get, trust me. I mean, I've spent, you know, my life's work in working with people who are oppressed, certainly understand institutionalized racism, criminalization of individuals with mental health and substance issues, as well as racial disparities. Those are real, and there are problems within our systems. We definitely know that. And I applaud Bloomington for trying to look at innovative ways for us to be able to address that. And I feel like Chief DeKoff, you know, I work in 20 different counties, is by far the most progressive police chief of, you know, certainly the cities that I work in. And as several people have denoted, has taken, you know, things like downtown resource officers. And I think when Greg was talking, Greg May was talking about going to those camps is, you know, a lot of those folks have mental health, substance issues. A lot of our staff are going. They're helping to try to find them housing. DROs maybe show up, because somebody's made a call to the police, and they're not arresting them. They're trying to see what they can do to try to get them the services that they need. And I think that the move to add more social workers and get more resource officers is a really good intention, not only on the part of the mayor, but the chief of police, to say, we need to make sure that, you know, we're kind of changing our organization from the inside out. And I guess one final comment I really want to make that I think is so important is, you know, how can we do this together and not be divisive? But also, how are we ensuring that we're able to get the work that we need done? And then, I guess, the last piece was just that, this idea of the ethics of a social worker, it not being ethical for police to have a social worker embedded is just absolutely not true. And I know Dr. Pat Sullivan submitted a letter to the city council members. He is the assistant or the associate dean for the IU School of Social Work. You know, he very unequivocally said that, you know, it is his belief, not as a faculty member, but as a person and a social worker, that unequivocally, you can work, you must. And I guess that's part of it, is the code of ethics, you know, kind of one of the number-one principles are building relationships. And I feel like the way this is being approached is not going to help anybody get anything done. So I hear sort of the threats about, like, if we don't do what we need to do this time, you know, next year, we're gonna really wreak havoc. And I would just suggest, let's do what we can to try to come together to say, what do we need to do to make our community a better, better-informed, better-educated, better-trained, whether it's police force? And then, it shouldn't be an and/or. It shouldn't be, well, either you have the social workers here, or you have them there. We need both. We need social workers within the police department, and social service agencies need more services. And I'd say, if you take three positions and you give that out to social service agencies, that is not gonna even make a dent in the problems we have in this community. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Do we have any more, Clark Morden? No? Don't see any more?
I don't see any more.
Good. I will just give it a few more seconds. Okay, seeing none. We'll go to my council colleagues for final comments on appropriation ordinance 20-04. Councilmember Piedmont Smith.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I would like to make a motion. I move that the council adopt the following finding concerning the recommendations in the documents submitted on September 21st, 2020 by Danielle Byrd. The council finds that it has received the document titled "Letter Opposing 2021 Proposed Police Budget" and accompanying signature page, and has duly considered the recommendations contained therein, as well as public comments provided at meetings related to the 2021 budget, while considering the 2021 budget, tax rates, and tax levy. And I think our council attorney might be able to explain why it's good for us to recognize the petition formally.
Yes, thank you. And this is a bit odd, because Danielle Byrd, I believe, is still here in the meeting. So there's a provision under state law that allows taxpayers to file a petition objecting to a budget or a tax rate or levy, and which obligates the council to adopt a finding in response. The petition or the document submitted by Danielle that contains signatures from well over 10 people, in fact, over 100 folks. It wasn't clear whether that was a petition meant to fall under that provision of state code, but I think it doesn't hurt for the council to recognize and acknowledge that it received those documents and make the finding as Councilmember Piedmont Smith expressed.
Second.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. It's been moved in second. How do we go about this, Mr. Lucas? Do we?
So this is a motion to adopt a finding by the council. It just requires a majority vote. It's debatable. I can also answer any clarifying questions if council members have any.
Do we have any questions? Yes, Councilmember Scambler.
Thank you. Mr. Lucas, thank you for assembling and explaining this. Just, could you clarify the difference between a petition and our choice to acknowledge it and other letters or correspondence that we receive from our residents or from constituents?
The difference here is, and again, Danielle may be able to clarify if they intended this petition to fall under the relevant portion of state code. But this petition was signed by 10 or more taxpayers, seemed to object to a budget, and was timely filed. You correctly point out that the council receives numerous comments from lots of individuals voicing all sorts of opinions. But because this particular petition seemed to potentially fall under the provision of state code that requires a council response, that's the reason for the suggested motion. That's not to say that the council doesn't take into consideration all of the comments it receives from the public. But because of the way this was submitted, it raised a question of whether it fell under that provision of state law.
Great, thank you. That's very helpful.
Okay, do we have any more questions? Okay. I do have one question, and I guess I'm just not clear on what this is. It's the first time I've heard of it. And I'd be happy to recognize it, but I don't know quite what that means.
This is the first time I haven't seen a past example where the councils had to do this. So the state code provision that applies here says that 10 or more taxpayers can object to a budget, tax rate, or tax levy by filing an objection petition with the proper officers of the political subdivision. And if a petition is filed under that subsection, the fiscal body of the political subdivision, so that's the council, shall adopt with its budget a finding concerning the objections in the petition and any testimony presented at the adoption hearing. So I think what the motion from Councilmember Piedmont Smith does is it acknowledges that we've received the petition submitted by Danielle Byrd and other members of the public, that the council has considered that as part of its deliberation on the budget legislation, and is formally recognizing that we've received that document.
Okay, that clarifies it. Thank you. Councilmember Sandberg.
Yes, I don't have a question, because I too just saw this just before we were convening for this meeting. And I think what it does is it just accepts that we've received the information, we've considered it, you know, given it due respect. Does not mean, when we vote, that we've acknowledged it, that we necessarily agree with it. And that's the case with any number of feedback that we get from either people in the community, taxpayers or not. People are free to voice their opinions, and this council has a responsibility to accept what they're sharing with us or not. This is just a matter of, we've received it, we've considered it, and here's how we're going to proceed with our budget.
Okay, thank you very much. Any further comments or clarifications? Okay, it has been moved in second. Is it now time for Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Well, I just noticed that Danielle Byrd raised her hand. I wonder if we might hear from her.
Can you unmute her, Clark Morden? Yes.
Hello, thank you. I was not speaking up on this petition, because I mentioned it earlier, and I didn't want to take a lot more time. And I did submit this. It does currently have 158 signatures. And the letter was submitted via email to every council member and the mayor as well. So quite a long time ago. So I've already heard back from several council members and had some correspondence with them that were asking some further questions and that. So many of the signatures, and I submitted the names of the individuals, and several individuals have commented on that petition and made additional comments other than just signing it. And several of them indicate that they are social workers and service providers. And there are some folks that have signed that petition who are service receivers as well. So I just wanted to highlight that. I don't know how the public might obtain those comments. I mean, it's a long letter. There's a lot of research linked in that letter. So I just don't think it's timely right now to read that, but I don't know how that information is obtained by the public. So I'd be happy to help in any way I can, but thank you so much for acknowledging that. There are, as I said, 158 people signed this, and this is regarding specifically the structure of the police budget with the social workers, the neighborhood resource specialist, and the data analyst. So.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Scambler.
Yes, I don't know if this is directed to our parliamentarian or to Mr. Lucas, but is a copy of the letter attached to this finding by definition?
Well, the finding at the moment is simply a motion, but I can certainly work with the clerk's office to make both this finding and the petition and all the associated documents that Danielle has submitted to the council office available publicly.
Right. I mean, I know that it's public information anyway, since it was sent to us as council members. But it seems to make sense to just formally attach it to this finding, if I'm being accurate.
Okay. Do we have any other comments? Okay, this motion has been made, and second, is it time to call the roll on this motion? Clark, would you please call the roll?
Yes. Councilmember Rallo?
Yes.
Scambler?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Clarity?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And that motion passes 8-0. Thank you, Councilmember Piedmont Smith and Ms. Byrd. Now, we're back to final comments from, and we don't have any more public comments right now. Okay, final comments from council members on appropriation ordinance 20-04. Councilmember Sandberg.
Briefly, it is our responsibility as a council to make sure we have a reasonable budget going forward, that our department heads have the dollars that they need to do the work, that the salaries are in line with best practices. And so, on the whole, I wholeheartedly support this budget. I think we've all acknowledged there are things in it that we support very confidently. There were other things that several of us didn't, and we weren't always in agreement with what those things were, whether it was respect to the TDM, whether it was respect to the police budget. That said, we always must keep the big picture in mind. And so, in spite of my differences with what had been proposed, I will make it my responsibility to continue to work on those things throughout the year and throughout the next budget cycles. But I'm certainly not going to vote no on the budget of a whole, based on some of the differences that I may have. That's for another day for us to work through. As many people have already stated, some of these issues are going to take a lot of time. We are dealing with hardships that were unforeseen when the budget process got started, and we are looking at some tough years ahead. But we must work with collegiality. We must work with respect to the challenges that we all face. And I certainly appreciated Ms. Linda Grove Paul's comment about how much more important it's gonna be for us to work together than to try to us versus them. So on the whole, I'm happy to support this budget in spite of some of my differences on some of the details. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Piedmont Smith.
Yes, I wanted to address the comments about the rubber bullets and the gas masks. These items also jumped out at me from the capital budget of the Bloomington Police Department. The, and I talked to Chief DeKoff about it and to the mayor's, the deputy mayor. And the, first of all, the Bloomington Police Department doesn't use rubber bullets. This is the less lethal ammunition that is in the budget for $3,000 is beanbag rounds and sponge rounds, which can hurt, but they, according to Chief DeKoff, they are used primarily to disarm individuals that have weapons that, you know, a police officer has been called in. There's somebody with a weapon who will not drop the weapon. And so, they use these kind of less lethal means to, you know, shoot the person in the arm, for example, and get them to drop the knife or the gun. So that is the explanation I received for that purchase. And then, the gas masks really bothered me, because I know that the CS gas that they use is actually banned as a weapon of war. And it's very disturbing to me that any civilian law enforcement would use the gas anywhere in this country. The, as we have seen, it's been copiously used on protesters this summer, even peaceful protesters in other cities. So that was very disturbing to me. I asked Chief DeKoff about the gas masks, and he said, you know, they are not only for the rare occasions when the BPD might use the CS gas, but also for incidents where there might be a chemical spill or an accident, either at an IU research lab or in an industrial setting in the city where the police department would be called upon to help. And so, the gas masks are there to protect our police officers. So I guess what I have taken from this is that what I really want is to ban the use of tear gas, not to ban the use of gas masks. So I am pursuing such an ordinance in the future to bring to the council. I believe it is within our purview. within our purview to ban the use of certain weapons by our police department. The, our council attorney is still looking into the details. But just like we curbed specific uses of the cert vehicle, I believe we can also curb the use of tear gas. So that is a route that I'm going to pursue. And the other thing I want to talk about was the process for this budget. Councilmember Rosenbarger has already brought this up with the salary ordinance. I am indeed disappointed with the process of this budget and all the budgets that I have already been a part of as part of this administration and the previous mayoral administration. It's always the same thing. We have a budget advance, then we hear nothing from the mayor and his administration for months. Then we have the budget hearings in August and we, you know, give various opinions and none of them are really acted upon unless we go behind the scenes and and lobby the mayor's administration and and kind of go out of our way to to emphasize certain points and bring our arguments together and bring together five votes. It's just not a good way of deciding how to use the taxpayer money. I know some of it is dictated by state law and the way that the mayoral system is set up. But I think there needs to be more transparency. I think it would be first of all, I would appreciate hearing from the mayor between the budget advance and August, following up on the things that we said at the budget advance. And secondly, I think that we need some kind of mechanism to to do a straw poll vote to say this, you know, five of us want this change and to do that in a public setting, rather than having closed meetings and saying, you know, I've convinced this person to do this, if you do that, et cetera, et cetera. So I I do intend to follow through and work with my council colleagues and with the mayor to improve this process for the future. I am frankly disappointed that there was not more communication from the mayor's office, especially in such a turbulent year where we had some grave concerns, which is systemic systemic concerns about law enforcement and other things. But anyway, overall, I think this, I will be voting in favor of the budget. I think that it's smart to use some of our reserve funds and rainy day funds because I do agree with the mayor in that. Oh, I've forgotten the turn of phrase now, but when the economy is down, that's when the government really has to step in. And we're really, our business community is really struggling. Our residents are really struggling just to pay the rent. And so some of these initiatives on housing, on social service funding, on improvements to pedestrian corridors, I think these are good investments. So with that, I I will, I will be voting yes tonight.
Thank you. Further comments from council members? Councilmember Rallo.
Thank you. Well, my perspective is, first of all, this is a fiscally sound budget, which it's our fiduciary responsibility to oversee. This administration still keeps to its commitments of infrastructure, social service funding, and and its commitment to climate. And yes, is it a perfect budget? Is it? Does it address any, every one of our particular requests? I think the administration's done a very good job in balancing, which is, you know, these commitments, various commitments. Hearing from all nine of us while still attending into a pandemic crisis, which I found they they turned on a dime and addressed immediately in a very effective way, working with community, working with IU Health and so forth. Hope you can still hear me. While also freeing up funds for local businesses for their support. So, you know, my perspective is sort of the, you know, the record over time has been really quite extraordinary. And, you know, some examples I would just like to note is, you know, we all are aware of the millions of dollars spent on solarizing the city, on public buildings. Their commitment to tree planting of increasing public tree cover by fifty percent in accord with the Urban Forest Report. Jack Hopkins social service funding with the Recover Forward expenditures adding an additional two hundred thousand dollars as this year and next year, with a total of two point two million dollars over the a period of five years, including next year's budget. Sidewalk improvement enhancements, increasing expending four hundred thousand dollars in the next budget, continuing commitments to alternative transportation. Bloomington Transit has increased its electric buses. I think they've acquired two with four more on the way. We have four million dollars of a green infrastructure program enhancement underway. Since this administration has begun, it's added over nine hundred affordable housing units. And all the while doubling basic infrastructure over the next, over the past three years. Those are just a few things that I wanted to note. Because we get lost, I think, in the weeds when we talk about specific things like fifteen thousand dollars for gas masks for the police department. And we end up speaking about that a lot while losing the context, as Councilmember Sandberg said, of really the accomplishments that have been made. So I think, I think this is a very good budget. I think it deserves the support. And I look forward with to working with the administration to work on climate action, the Recover Forward Plan, to work toward greater social service funding. And just to say, I, I think that, yes, I'm very much aware of the problems with various police forces around the country. Ours is a model police force. I'm really proud of the officers, the sworn officers and what they have to do. I think they deserve the support of the community and the support of the council. They have my support. They're expertly trained, they're well disciplined. And I think that they're a model for other communities. And so I will commit to adding more officers, sworn officers in the future, because I think that they, you know, when you have a strained police force, that's when mistakes get made. And so they deserve that support. And the administration's recognized that, too, moving forward with housing allowances, moving forward with allowing them to use squad cars and so forth. So all in all, I think this is a very good budget. I support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Further final comments from council members? Councilmember Flaherty.
Sure, thanks. First, yes, thank you to Mayor Hamilton and Controller Underwood and Ms. Shaw and all the department heads and city staff for all their hard work on this year's budget. I'm confident that it reflects what they believe is best for the city, and I really do appreciate their efforts on that. I also appreciate Mayor Hamilton's overview at the beginning of the meeting tonight, highlighting many of the good things in this budget and many of the good things the city has invested in in recent years. We do have a lot of common values, even if we sometimes disagree about execution or the pace of change or the urgency of various challenges we face. I already spoke two weeks ago when we considered these ordinances about some of the structural and substantive challenges I had with this budget and the budgeting process. So I won't go into great length on that. But I think this is a big picture thing, actually. And when I ran for office, when I ran for council, I ran to try to affect change, change in line with the values that I campaigned on, to shift away meaningfully from the status quo and to really start to tackle some of these challenges in our adopted plans and goals more aggressively than we have been. And for the council, as the city's fiscal body, appropriations like the city budget are one of the ways that we can affect change in line with our policy priorities as elected officials. And I guess my disappointment is that I don't feel like I've impacted this budget at all, in part because of the procedural shortcomings and how we approach budgeting and the fact that we don't have a defined structure for collaboration and compromise. Of the six or seven specific items or changes that I've asked for, none were incorporated or really meaningfully discussed. I've spoken with Mayor Hamilton about this, and he feels that the budget generally reflects some of the broader priorities that I spoke of at the budget advance in April. And I've reviewed those, you know, my previous statements and comments, and I'll just respectfully disagree with that, you know, perspective of his. So for me to feel good about and support the annual budget, I think it's important to have seen compromises that include council member priorities. And I personally just don't feel like that has been the case this year. So again, I certainly respect that the mayor has a different view and that some of my colleagues may weigh and make decisions differently in the budgetary context. But regardless, I do look forward to working with the administration on future budgets and working with my colleagues and council staff on process reforms to how we approach budgeting and appropriations going forward. So thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Scambler.
Thank you. As I was kind of organizing my notes for this, my comments fall into two big categories. One is thank yous and the other is opportunities that I see going forward. First, thank you to my colleagues on council and particularly to community members who have been part of this discussion, who have been part of a thoughtful discussion at every step of this budget process. I believe that your comments and your deliberation helped make this a better budget, and that's what can make us a better city. To the mayor and to the department heads, thank you for crafting a budget that speaks to many of our most deeply held values. In a tight year, you presented us with a budget that invests in a transportation demand management position, one of the very few additions as part of our larger response to climate change. You added additional Jack Hopkins funding so that we can respond to the needs of those who are most vulnerable in our communities. And I also want to applaud the investment in additional tools that will help us expand our definition of public safety and policing. I look forward to meeting our new social workers and data analysts and seeing the ways in which they make us better and more responsive to our community's needs. I also want to applaud the mayor's willingness to implement some policies and practices, most notably take home cars and housing assistance, that I think will help us recruit and retain the best officers that will serve our community in a way that is most consistent with our values. I also want to thank the city staff, all seven hundred plus of you, for the work you've done during an extraordinary year. You are the foundation of everything we do. I see four, there are any number of opportunities going forward, but there are four in particular I want to underscore. I think we have an opportunity to pay very close attention to the new TDM position, ensure that it is supported properly, and identify the best strategies for evaluating its effectiveness, including its placement within the city's organizational chart. I think we need to continue to respond to the needs of individuals and organizations that are hit hardest by the economic downturn. COVID doesn't seem to be going away as quickly as we all hoped, and I think that need is going to continue to be there. I think we have a need to revisit and refine the budgeting process for the city to ensure that we have a sense of collaboration, even when we don't have a sense of agreement. And finally, it's one thing I haven't heard mentioned yet. I would really, particularly with difficult budget years ahead, when revenue is going to be key, I think we have an opportunity to work closely with our county colleagues and with legislators to identify some alternative policies and practices for assessing local income taxes as a means of generating additional revenue. I think these are things we can focus on together. With that, I'll be supporting this budget.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. More final comments from council members? Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Sims. I'd like to thank Mayor Hamilton, City Controller Underwood, everybody at the city that worked on the budgets. I know it was lots, lots of work. I want to thank the council members for all their agreements, disagreements, comments. I want to thank all the community members that weighed in on it. This really is a good budget. Keeping the big picture, it is a good budget. It does address a lot of the things we think are important and reflecting the values that we have in Bloomington. And it's okay that we disagree. It's, it's fine. I think that's part of what democracy is all about. So I thought that it was, we would all like something a little different. Members of the public, everybody would like something a little different. But we disagreed in public, we disagreed transparently, we tried to do the best job we could. And let's just work together going forward, and we will make it better every year that we work on this. And I appreciate that. And so thank you to everybody that was involved in this, and I will be supporting the budget as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further? Councilmember Rosenbarger.
Thanks for asking. I feel like when I commented earlier, it was more so my overarching thoughts on that. Thanks.
Okay, that's fine. Just want to make sure. I guess I am the final one here. My comments are, I will support this budget. Is it perfect? No. But it has a lot of good things, I think, for this community. I think it's building on some of the things that we've have been working on over the years, in particular with infrastructure and some of the other things that don't really get talked about. At least over the course of this budget year. I am a little I don't quite understand the lack of communication or what appears to be a lack of communication between administration and some of my colleagues, and even with myself on occasion. So I am looking for more intentional and direct communications as we move forward. I think that's the best thing. Collegial, intentional communications. I think that's the key. We all submitted a bunch of questions to the administrations. I don't know what we got them in written form, some of them in bold red. I will be the first to admit that I wasn't terribly happy with some of the responses I got to some of my questions. But I was happy with the the explanation as to why I may, may not have gotten exactly what I want. And in particularly, one example was the deer population and some other things, which I know we haven't talked about at all. But but that's another thing. So I'm in the same boat with everyone else. I am not happy, but I think it'll get better as we move forward. I want to thank Ms. Lynda Grove Paul for some of her comments. I think they're very, very supportive. And and all of our public, for that matter. Specifically, I want to talk about Mr. Goodlad, Ms. Stewart. And we have a lot of talks. I talk with them. I'm not so sure we agree all the time, but I appreciate those, those comments. There's a lot of talk about Bloomington Police Department. I even heard something about us being a model police department, and I could appreciate that assessment. I do not feel that, that it is a model police department. There are some things that we need to work on. I think we have been working on. But what I think BPD is, is a very good police department that can be improved and will be improved. And there's some things we need to work on. I think Chief DeKoff, and I understand some of the things that's been said and all, some of the other comments that's been made. I think under his leadership, this department has come a long way. And I think some of those things should be highlighted as we move forward. I think a lot of those things are unknown to the community at large. Okay. I mean, I sat on the Board of Public Safety years ago, so we were part of the diversity push, some of the training changes that I'm not so sure everyone really knows about. Now, is it perfect? No. Are we going to get better? I think we will. I think we have to with all of our social needs. I will say this, a lot of the talk was with BPD and those costs. One in particular was the disparate arrest percentages of black people here in Bloomington. And I think incarceration was something like seventeen percent with a four percent population or somewhere in that neighborhood. And I must simply say that is true, and that is not acceptable. I will also say that through community work and involvement, I think those numbers have I will also say that through community work and involvement, I think those numbers have been improved over the years. So it is not acceptable. Now, I know we're talking about the budget and like, but let's let's look at a broader picture there. You know what else is not acceptable? It's not acceptable for me to be called a dumbass N-word while I'm getting gas this afternoon because I chose to wear a mask. That is not acceptable. It is not acceptable for the disparate numbers and expulsions and suspensions that we have in our school system right here in Monroe County. Don't make them a bad school system, but those numbers are disparate. So we we talk about a lot of things. Let's look at this broader and more holistically. Let's look about employment. As we came out of the pandemic, the employment rate, unemployment rate for blacks nationwide was around 16% when non-blacks were somewhere around 6%. Yeah, you know, and those numbers, I didn't quite get them quite down, but I know it's close enough. Look at the disparate numbers, how it affects the black population and people of color with COVID-19. That's not acceptable. It is also not acceptable that less than 1% of blacks in this town own their home. See, these are the things that we've all been working on, many of us have been working on for years, and there has been improvement. So yes, we got to speed some things up, but I tend to work more with long-term solutions with other community members, and we are improving these. We can take care of tear gas. We can take care of all those things. If there are community concerns, that's not part of the budget, I don't think. But there's ways that we can handle that if that is a community priority. So I'm glad to hear those things. But I don't want us to focus so much on on the little few things that we disagree with, that we just miss the big picture. So with that, I will support this budget. I look that we could improve as we move forward, working through budgets and communications. But tonight I will support that. So with that, I think, Clerk Bolden, I think we're time to call the roll.
Okay. We'll start with Councilmember Scambalory.
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Flaherty?
No.
Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg? I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
Yes.
Thank you. Then Rallo? I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, is that it? It looks like a preparation ordinance, 20 actual four passes seven one. Okay, thank you all, my colleagues, for your diligence this evening. Mr. Lucas, we're now down to council schedule.
No council schedule to announce tonight. I just saw Jeff Underwood sign off and say thank you. Just to note that the clerk's office may be getting in touch with you all about obtaining signatures on the items that just passed tonight, so just keep a lookout for that, and thank you all for your for your work.
Thank you. I think the clerk has already reached out and asked us all to take care of that on tomorrow, if I'm not mistaken. So get that started, and it can go to other places and get other signatures, so it's done. Okay. I will accept a motion to adjourn.
I'm moved.
All right. It's been moved in second. Thank you all for your work. Look forward to continuing to work with you, and have a great night.
Thank you.